City Commission meeting of Tuesday, April 3rd, 2018. Let the roll call show that all commissioners are here with the addition of the mayor for the day, Elania Pierce. And the first thing we will address is the order of business. Mr. Kessel.
Thank you, Commissioner President Decker. I do have three different ordinance, or excuse me, three different changes that I'd like to suggest. The first one would change item 4A, we'll eliminate that, but replace it with the mayor for the day and her essay. The second one would be to move down and add 4B, which would be a first reading of a liquor ordinance. You should have all received a copy of that just a little while ago. And then the third is under the consent agenda to remove the gaming license specific to the Ramada Grand Dakota. Those are the three items that I would suggest we change on tonight's agenda.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kessel. Any questions for Mr. Kessel on the order of business?
Make motion to approve the order of business.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none will vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Order of business is approved. Anything on the consent agenda that commissioners would like to discuss or have questions about? Now I look for a motion.
Someone?
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
With a second. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Trustam?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Consent agenda is approved. We have multiple timetable items tonight, but we'll move into the non timetable agenda. And our first item up is our mayor for the day, and she is going to read her essay that won her place up here today. So this is Mayor for the Day, Elania Pierce.
Have you ever wondered what it would be like to be the mayor? Well, in these paragraphs, you can find out what it's like to be the mayor. I would be a great mayor for Dickinson, N.D. It seems to me that I am pretty polite. I think if everyone had great manners, everyone would be great friends. In my opinion, I'm pretty smart. I think I would be a great mayor because I would think long and hard about questions from citizens. I believe that I'm pretty responsible. I will turn and work that is due and keep myself organized. I would be a great mayor for Dickinson, N.D., and I hope you agree. Dickinson, N.D. is a great place to live. Dickinson is a small city. It is not very crowded, and you can get from place to place within 10 to 15 minutes. Dickinson also has a very good hospital and really good clinics. The hospital is very big. The hospital has very good transportation. Dickinson also has good activities for kids. For example, we have bowling and golf and swimming pools. I hope you agree that Dickinson, N.D. is a great place to live. I believe our city needs some improvement. In our city, we need to recycle more. So many people leave garbage on the streets and sidewalks. I think if more people recycle, there will not be so much garbage everywhere. In Dickinson, I believe we need more animal shelters. There are so many homeless animals walking on the streets. That's why I think Dickinson, N.D. needs more animal shelters. I hope you agree our city needs some improvements. Clearly, you can see being mayor can be hard work, but all in all, being mayor is an important job. Do you want to be mayor? Being mayor might be hard, but in all, it's a wonderful job. I hope you agree that I would be a great mayor for Dickinson.
Well, thank you. Excellent job.
I think she wrote your next campaign.
Oh, I think she did. And I would like to thank Mrs. Kovach for all the hard work she does and the other teachers at Prairie Rose. Every year that I have been the mayor, I've been invited into the classroom, and it has been an experience every time. I look forward to every year. So thank you very much, and I really appreciate the hard work you do. And you're, what now, nine? Nine more years, you can run. Once you turn 18, so I'll be ready by then. Well, thank you again, everyone, and really thank you, Elania, for participating in this event. And we'll move forward now with item B, Mr. Kessel.
Thank you. The first reading of the ordinance, I'm going to ask Ms. Murtha to go over that with you, but I wanted to explain a little bit of why we are at where we're at. This agenda item that we eliminated when we did the commission agenda changes was a tabled item from the last meeting, and it was to discuss a liquor license for the Expedition League, and that is the league, of course, that is bringing the big sticks to the city of Dickinson. It is, we have endeavored to try to use our existing ordinance in a way that allows them to complete their operations in the manner that they choose to. And we found that it's just, it's really difficult to do that. It would require them to change their operations in a way that is non conducive, and so the best way to get this done is simply to do an ordinance change that would reflect something like the cities of Bismarck, Minot, and Fargo have done to accommodate their semi professional sporting teams. So we have looked at those ordinances. What you have before you is a first reading. Most likely, there'll be changes to this ordinance upon second reading, but in order to comply with the expected timeframes and the opening day for the big sticks, we're here before you asking for first reading on the ordinance. Once they've received the license from the city of Dickinson to do, to sell liquor, they have to go to the state, and the state timeframe is four to six weeks for issuance. If the city commission takes first reading tonight and second reading at the next city commission meeting on the 17th, that would allow, six weeks out, they would get their state license three days before opening day. So that's why the expediency in tonight and our efforts to try and accommodate as best we can their operations. So with that explanation, I'll let Attorney Murtha go over the first reading that you have before you.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the commission. With regards to this ordinance draft, I'll begin with my disclaimer, which was the decision to bring this forward just came very recently, actually this afternoon. And so when Mr. Kessel suggested that there would be changes between the first and second reading, I can promise you that there are going to be changes because there are items that are missing in this. For example, there's not a fee that's listed. That would actually have to be added to the fee schedule. The two sections that are issue are the classes and a description of what those classes are. Again, I'm even noticing here that with the, with the lack of the color copy, it's difficult to see that actually the addition under 4.08, .060 license requirements, that that entire subsection L would be new to the ordinance, and it is a very long ordinance, so it was abbreviated to just right at this point, add the subsection. The language for this ordinance was modeled after a similar license class that the city of Bismarck has. In the city of Bismarck ordinance, they have, provide for a retail beer and wine license for the concession contract holder on the golf courses. I'm trying to think besides the, in the civic center, I believe. So the golf courses in the civic center are provided for in the class. So from their modeling, presenting to you or offering to you a class that would, as written right now, be restricted to the concession license holder for the operators having concessions at the Dickinson Municipal Ballpark, and that is the only location. If members of the commission would like to proceed with this license class, you can add specific locations as well as you see fit. The license is initiated with the applicant and terminates with the contract by the operator. So as soon as their contract for those concessions and as does this license. And it is also non transferable, so someone can't get it and then transfer it to someone else. So it's very, it's a very limited license for this specific purpose. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time. Some of my answers may be, I don't know, but hopefully I can address those in the updated version that would be presented to you at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Murtha. Ms. Pierce, now you see why government does not move at light and pace. First lesson. So any questions, commissioners?
So is the intention for this, for the beer concessions to be in a beer garden atmosphere or that they can have it in the stands? Where are we going with this?
This would, this would allow them to be able to sell concessions that could be consumed anywhere within the ballpark, so in the stands. There was some, the really only other alternative to provide for that would have been a special event permit request, and that would have allowed for consumption in the stands. All the other license options would have required a more restricted serving and seating area.
Okay. Ms. Murtha, this would only allow the sale of alcohol at the Batman Sixteen Stadium. Is that correct?
No, it would not. It would allow them to provide concessions at, as written, it would allow them to sell beer under the terms of their contract for whenever they're providing the concessions at the ballpark location.
So it could potentially be any type of baseball?
It could be, depending upon, I have not reviewed, I have not reviewed their contract with the Parks and Recreation to be able to say the circumstances under which they're going to be providing concessions.
Is it possible to limit it to just those games? That was a question I had.
Or those events?
I think that the, the ordinance could be written in such a way, revised in such a way to be limiting to certain types of events. However, I wouldn't advise stating the name of the events in the ordinance itself because things change more frequently than ordinances do.
And with this, Ms. Murtha, we, my understanding is they would, they would be policing basically their, their stands to make sure that they're not in violation.
They would be under the same obligations as any other, yes.
Any other event.
License holder, yes.
And then we could also add, add to this as in the BAC or our West River Center or the Ice Rink or the Armory. We could add different locations. We just have to, you know, that would be up to us to decide what we want to do.
Yes.
So, and I, and I know there have been people in the past that have asked for something like this, especially at the BAC, because they do have a hard time finding concessioners to service some of their events.
Yes.
So I think this would have benefited them also.
Definitely.
So any other questions, comments?
If I may, just two more comments. They would also have to comply with our ordinance, meaning they have to have servers that are over the age of 21 and all the other rules that apply to any of our liquor licenses. And even if we may not, if we may allow liquor sales at all events, it doesn't mean that the entity that's endorsing those events would allow it. So I, you know, if there's a high school baseball game, you're probably not going to see liquor sales there or Legion. So just a point of clarification is that even though we may be more lenient, that doesn't mean that every event will have liquor.
And as a liquor license holder, they would be subject to the same, not just responsibilities, but the same revocation process, again, as any other liquor license holder should incidents occur that are not in compliance with state or local code.
Okay. I would assume the American Legion and the High School Activities Association might have some comment on that.
Yeah, thinking they don't allow that.
I would guess.
Right. Any further questions, comments? If not, this is a public hearing. I would invite anyone from the public to come up to the podium, address any concerns with ordinance. Can we get a number?
Yes, the number would be, moment, as I scroll down, the ordinance number would be 1649.
1649?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance number 1649. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Steve Wagner, and I'm the president of the Expedition League. And President Decker and members of the commission, thank you for allowing me to, to address you guys and speak a little bit about this. So just to make sure that everyone understands what our intentions are, I guess one of the first things I wanted to mention is we have a ballpark lease for Dakota Community Bank and Trust Ballpark with the Park District. And in that lease, it calls, it specifically notes that we will only serve beer and wine at big sticks games. We actually have to, under that lease agreement, we have to lock up any, any beer containers, wine, any, any alcohol containers of any kind have to be locked up and stored in a locked container whenever there's any other events there, because we're actually operating concessions for all events at the ballpark. So we'll operate it for high school and Legion and, and Minot State Games and, or I'm sorry, Dickinson State Games. And so we operate, we operate concessions, but that lease agreement specifically states that those, that any beer or wine is locked up. So our intention certainly is that we just want, we just want to be able to serve beer and wine at our games, the big sticks games, which are 32 nights a year. Our, our home opener is June 1st, last game, I think, is August 3rd. So 32 dates in that nine or so week window of time. So I just wanted to make sure that there was clarity on that and, and you all understand kind of our approach, what we're looking to do. Also, we'll work very closely with the police department and, you know, as far as training, the people who are serving the alcohol. We're also going to have a risk ban policy, so we're going to, we'll have a table where people will get carded, and then we'll, we'll issue them a risk ban and, and we'll be, obviously, we'll comply with all of the regulations around serving and, and carding of, of people who, who are looking to consume the beer and wine.
Okay. Well, thank you. Now I guess we need some clarification on our end, because he just stated beer and wine.
We just talked about that.
So.
The initial application that came before you last, at the last meeting was for a beer only license, and so this would be the first time I've, I've heard about wine sales.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, we're fine with beer. We don't, we don't need a wine license.
Okay.
We're fine with beer.
Okay.
Yep, yep. So I, we, we're serving wine in some of our other communities. We're in seven other cities where we've secured either a beer or beer and wine license. We're not serving hard alcohol anywhere, so it's just your beer and, in some cases, beer and wine. We were approved for our beer and wine license in Minot.
Okay.
Last night, so I've got that in my head a little bit.
Well, when you put the sky boxes in, go ahead and come back.
Yeah.
So.
We'll let you know on that one, Mayor.
Come back then, so. Any questions?
No, no questions. Just for us, I guess, the wine thing, should we look at that now?
That's what I wanted to ask the commissioner. Do you want it to be beer and wine?
Because if we do, if we're talking to BAC and other places, I mean, there might be events that would want wine.
I have no problem with adding wine to this right now, including it.
That would be fine with me, too.
My wife might want a glass of wine while I have a beer, et cetera.
I don't have any.
Okay.
Yeah. Beer and wine would be fine.
So we can amend that, you know, on the second reading, so.
Yes.
But thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Anyone else from the public? Want to come forward? Any issues with ordinance 1649 or comments on 1649? No one else from the public, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, questions, comments?
Yes, I just look forward to the changes that we'll make between now and the next reading, but it seems like we're on the right path and we've got a good template to work with, so, yeah. I would make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 1649.
A motion to approve?
With changes.
With changes.
Second.
And, second. Any further questions or comments? Now we'll vote. Mr. Altman's?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustam?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Ordinance 1649 passes first reading. Next up is tobacco license for N.D. Laundry Services. Mr. Kessel?
Thank you, President Decker. We have had quite a few changes of address lately, and this is another one for a tobacco license. North Dakota Laundry Services LLC, commonly known as a vape shop in town, they're currently located at 41 East Villard. Most people know that as the Ivanhoe Building. They are moving their operations to 104 Third Avenue East. The only concern that we had as a staff with this new location is the proximity to Roosevelt School. It is in compliance with our, any distance or that is included in our ordinance, so we don't have any issues then with the change in moving this address and would recommend approval of Dakota Laundry Services LLC moving from 41 East Villard to 104 Third Avenue East. And just for your reference, that is just north of the Downtown Family Fair.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kessel. Any questions for Mr. Kessel, comments on the address change to this tobacco license? If not, I look for a motion.
Make motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion or questions? Now we'll vote. Mr. Altman's?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustam?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next up is the purchase agreement for Odyssey Theater.
This is a very exciting agenda item, I know. It, it, the purchase agreement itself, Mr. President, members of the commission, I, I don't want to, you, I want to use your time the most efficiently that I am able, so I would, I'm not going to comment on every section of the purchase agreement. What I wanted to do was highlight some of what I believe to be the important sections, and then at the, at the end of that highlight, if there's a, if there's a question or discussion in a particular, for a particular term that you haven't, that hasn't been covered and that you want to discuss, we can do that at that time. In addition, because this does relate to contract, contract negotiations, if you review the purchase agreement during this time and, and believe that you would like to offer any changes, depending on the type of change, it may be appropriate and it would be permissible to go into executive session to discuss contract negotiations. So I just wanted to highlight that for you as well. It is not noted on the agenda as a, as a possible, we're bringing it to you for presentation, but because this is a regularly scheduled meeting, it is an option available to you at this time. So to begin with the sale of property, this, one of the things I wanted to highlight in section 1.1 with, you'll just notice that the final exhibit A is in fact, or the exhibit A is not final. It is in, still in draft form, and the reason for that is, as will be commented on later, in later sections of the purchase agreement, that the area needs to be formally replatted and the alleyway issue addressed. So that is, we anticipate that the buyer is going to be bringing that forward at the, initially at the May planning and zoning meeting, and then it will come before the commission thereafter in June. So we won't have an official description for the conveyed property until after that process is complete. So what's being highlighted in section 1.1 is the fact that we have an idea, we know the purchase price, we know the approximate location, but the specific detailed description won't be available until we're later on in the due diligence process of the purchase agreement. The second, there's some language with regards to closing, the due diligence period, the purchase price, which contains, you know, that's an important provision, but everybody, I believe, is familiar with this, the purchase price of $100,000 and the, the $10,000 down payment or earnest money for the, for the purchase. Going through, there's some provisions that were requested to be added by the buyer, for example, the survey, they are conducting the survey, they're retaining or have retained a firm to provide that survey, and they are incurring the cost of it. Examination, corrections of title, again, fairly, fairly standard provisions. The, we had several discussions with regards to timing. The buyer was interested in keeping the, the timing, the timing very short, recognizing, however, that the replating of the area and the forums in which that replat had to occur, the planning and zoning meeting, again, before the commission, are going to take time. And so these deadlines in here account for that. However, they are not strict, and the parties can agree to extend them if it becomes necessary. Another, the four, in section 4.2, this, this addresses the replat and rezoning process. The, I think the primary, or one of the more important provisions of this agreement is found in 4.4, which addresses the parking and no buildings. And so there's two, there's two easements that are being discussed in section 4.4. One is temporary, which would recur while the building is being constructed, and one is permanent. And both of these easements would be set out in a separate document. It's, it's entitled or, the acronym here is PNBE. So this document is another document that will have to come before the commission and finalize the specific terms between the party. However, the general idea of what this document will encompass is discussed in 4.4. So to begin with the construction easement, this would occur, is, we, we would not be asked to, this would, the area that they construct, the temporary construction easement would occur is on the part of the property that is not being conveyed. It would be still on city-owned, the city-owned parking lot. And what it would provide for, because they are purchasing these, the footprint of their building, they will need additional area or have indicated a need for additional area outside the footprint of the building in which to basically stage the construction. So this would, what the city is agreeing to do with the language here is to allow them to use the parking lot exclusively during the construction time period. They would provide notice when that construction period would begin, so the city would not vacate the lot upon execution of purchase agreement, but would vacate the area that has been agreed to upon initiation of construction. And again, it would cease as soon as that construction is done. It would not be, would not be permanent. The permanent easement, and this is probably the most important provision of the purchase agreement, relates to an agreement by the city that the parking area that would be adjacent to the theater would be maintained as a parking area, non exclusive, so not just for theater patrons, but for anyone in the downtown area, but it would be maintained as a, as, as a parking area for the duration of the time that that building would operate as a theater. So if it would ever change uses, that easement would end. And they were, they were very concerned about this particular point, concerned for downtown parking and the options for downtown parking. There is a provision in here that discusses that the fact, that this is, that the parties can agree otherwise at some point in the future, but again, it would take both sides agreeing. So I will pause, I will pause right there on this, on this provision, just to see if there's any questions specifically with regards to these two easements.
Commissioners, any questions from what has been explained so far on the purchase agreement?
Mr. President, I'll have a couple here. Let's see. Under 3.2 survey, I just want to make that clear, that sellers, us, is going to deliver or deliver to the, to the buyer the most recent survey. However, the buyer is going to be responsible for the, the standard detail requirement survey, the ALTA, right? Because those can be expensive. So we're not going to be paying for that. Is that correct?
Correct. This is a, the survey that's being discussed in that initial sentence, it has, is any survey document that is already within our possession or control, it's not requesting us to do a new survey and provide it to them.
It'd be a rough survey if we had one.
Yeah.
Okay. Then.
Mr. Steiner, you want to just pause, because we do have timetable coming up, so we'll pause at 5:00, and I would bid Ms. Elania Pierce a good day and thank her for being the mayor for the day. Thank you. Her mom asked her if she could. Her mom asked her if she could leave a little early, so. Once again, thank you, Prairie Rose, for all the hard work you do. I think the, the children really enjoy it, and I know I do too. So we do have a 5:00 timetable, so hold your questions on the purchase agreement. And the first item up on the 5:00 is the Renaissance Zone presentation. Mr. Josephson.
Thank, thank you, President Decker. Steve Josephson, county planner, I'm here to talk about the Renaissance Zone and give you a little bit of an update. As you recall, back in October of 2017, the city commission approved a, an expansion of changes to the Renaissance Zone. Because the city was able to take advantage of legislative changes that allowed for expansion of the zone, the city went ahead and, and approved a, an expansion of the zone and also changed the direction of it so that it's meant to help emphasize development along West Villard. And just a reminder, this is an economic incentive program that allows for the city to, to freeze assessments and for the state to freeze prop, income taxes for those, those properties that, that, that qualify for it. You know, they, they have to meet certain thresholds in terms of the kinds of improvements that they want to do or purchases that they want to do, depending upon if it's a residential or commercial property. Since that time, we forwarded the application up to the State Department of Community Affairs for their review and approval, which they did. They sent us a formal letter, and also, just to let you know, this is something all city staff can talk about, is Ricky Rarich, who's the, the pro, the program person, coordinator, who, who has the, who has the Renaissance Zone program, said that if other communities came in and wanted to do a new plan or an update, she wanted to show them the City of Dickinson's plan. So a lot of people worked hard on this, and, and it was an effort from, you know, from, from staff all the way up to the, all the way up to city commission. So it's, I think it's something the city can be proud of, can be proud of. So since that time, you should all, I believe you all have a digital copy of the, of the Renaissance Zone plan. We have hard copies over, over here. We have shared it with, we have shared it with, you know, with, you know, with, with the downtown association, Stark Development, other agencies, other agencies such as, such as that. Also, the city has gone ahead and within one of the monthly mailings and the utility bills had sent out information about the Renaissance Zone plan, and I believe Planning Director Hadley was going to pass those, pass those out for you.
Yeah, thank God.
So we have done that. Also, we were working with Stark Development Corporation. They were going to do a, do a public service amount, announcement that talked about the Renaissance Zone and other downtown programs that would then be used as a public service announcement. Not sure where they are at that. We shot our portion over at CNC, and, you know, so showed a great example of, of a building that had been through the Renaissance Zone project and had been, had been rehabbed, use, you know, using that project. To date, we have had a couple of people who've contacted the city regarding the program. One of them sounded like they were waiting to get their bids first before they, they were in the process of buying a building and then getting bids from contractors so that they could, they, so they needed to see what the bids would be before they contacted the city to take advantage, to take advan, to apply for the Renaissance Zone program. And I know that tomorrow, when the governor is here for his Main Street program, we can certainly talk about, I saw one of the questions was, do you have a Renaissance Zone program? Well, we do, and we're also make, have the wisdom to change it, to try and focus, you know, focus development and extend our Main Street area, you know, our Main Street area out. So this is just a quick update. As we, of course, as you know, as you get the proposals, they will be coming, you know, they will be going to the Planning and Zoning Commission for recommendation and then to plant, to the city commission for, you know, for approval. So all I wanted to do was just give you a quick update of where this was. By the way, the plan does expire in, in June of 2019, so later this year, we'll be working on an extension of it. Five-year extension is what the state law allows, and we'll probably just keep it as, you know, after all this work, we spent two years, you know, on, you know, deciding this, we may just very well keep it like this, but we'll see what happens. So I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Josephson, with the, the five-year extension, is there any expansion of the amount of blocks? Could you explain to the public how the, the formula works out, how many blocks we get?
Yes, yes, President Decker. Actually, it's based upon, it's based upon census. So it's, it's a matter of, of, I don't have the exact formula in front of me right now, but, but it's based on increments of 5,000. So, you know, based upon what, what the census says.
In 2020.
Yeah. But ours was based on 2010, and believe me, we talked to the state to say, hey, we've got some estimates, we, we had, we had this new study done, and they said, no, state law says, says 20, 2010. So if we renew this in 2019 and then we get, whenever we get our census, we can always amend it, you know, to, to meet that and expand it. One other thing that, that I did want to mention to you is that we talked about doing a, an overlay district in the university area just to the south of Dickinson State. And as you can see, part of the expansion was to capture that area just to the south of Dickinson, Dickinson State and try to allow, give people the opportunity to, you know, convert their structures for, you know, like niche-type commercial uses that would, that, that would serve the students and staff in that area. I know that, that DSU President Mitzel is very much likes that, and we've sent him the, sent him a copy of the current downtown overlay plan, and he will, we will be getting with him and other stakeholders in that area to discuss what would be appropriate for them. But that was part of the thing we talked about, is the Renaissance plan.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Josephson?
I'll just say a comment. It's not to diminish the work that we do as commissioners, but you guys make us look so good. You bringing up that this will be a template that the state would like other communities to use. That's a reoccurring theme with our 2035 plan. It's a reoccurring theme with so many things that city staff do together that comes before us. You just make our job so much easier, and so I want to give you recognition, you do such a wonderful job, as does the rest of the staff that pulls all of this information together for our community.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Altman. I'm sa, I'm guessing by you, you mean our entire team that works.
Entire team, entire staff of the city does such a wonderful job of making our job as commissioners so much more rewarding and, and giving us the information that we need to make a good informed decision for the public. So, thank you.
I agree. I, I know originally when I took this position, I, I came into Mr. Hadley's office and Mr. Josephson, and we had a meeting about this, and they were more than willing to tackle this. So, really appreciate it. So, we can use these blocks a lot more effectively than what we were doing in the past, so I appreciate that.
Thank you. And we're hoping to publicize it more, and maybe with the upturn in the economy, there will be more property owners in these areas who will want to do some, some renovations, update their buildings and house some new businesses within them. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Mr. Josephson. We have about seven minutes, so, Mr. Steiner?
Yep.
Do you have to hold those questions? All right.
Yep. Next part is 4.4, parking no build easement. In there, you talk about, you know, where the city will be responsible to maintain the parking. But for the easement, for the construction easement part, they will be using that. If that gets greatly damaged, who's going to be responsible for repairing that?
The buyer will be responsible for any damage to the parking lot that is, that occurs as a result of the, the temporary construction easement. And I believe, I know we specifically put that language in here, and they will indemnify, they will indemnify the seller for any damage.
Okay. Because they will have heavy equipment on there, more than likely, they'll go through that, that asphalt and, I mean.
Yes.
Require them to pave the whole thing. Anyway, just so.
Mrs. Murtha, that's in which section?
It is, it is in 4.4. I'm looking for the.
Yeah, I'm kind of.
There we go.
Buyer will indemni, well, not, it says buyer will indemnify seller.
The seller in the condition they.
Or any injury or damage to persons or property caused by seller's access.
Access to, oh, yes, the, you, I'm having trouble reading the, the indemnification will occur for, oh, here we go. It's on the bottom. Ah, knew it was in there. The portion or portions of the easement parcels used for the temporary rights described above will be returned to the seller in the condition they were in, in prior to the buyer's temporary use, and buyer will indemnify seller for any injury or damage to persons or property caused as a result of buyer's access under the terms of the temporary construction easement. So, well, that says access, it's as a result of you getting this easement, anything that occurs. And the, those indemnification provisions will be repeated again and probably in greater detail in the document, the PNBE document that will set forth the specific easements.
Super. Great. That's all I have.
So far, right?
So far.
There is, in Section 4.5, there is a seller's right to repurchase. This was offered actually in the initial, in the initial response to the, to the sale, and it's a guarantee of a type for the city that in the event this is initiated, but construction does not begin within 18 months. And our understanding is that they're going to begin construction as soon as they, they can, and we complete this purchase agreement. But if it does not occur within 18 months, then the city would have the right of first refusal for a repurchase of the property. The additional provisions, there's some standard language with regards to reflecting the fact that the seller is the city and not a private party, so subject to in compliance with the Open Records and Meanings laws, documents to be delivered at the time of closing, which have been discussed. And I scroll down to the end, there are some, throughout the agreement, there may be instances where there are, there are fees that are customarily paid by the seller, so perhaps title fees, closing fees, those type of things. And while it may be customary for the seller to pay them, there is a provision in here that indicates that if, if the purchase agreement or upon completion of the purchase agreement, the seller is going to be reimbursed by buyer for all of those fees. So the city will, the intent is that the city will net that $100,000. It will not be reduced economically by any type of expenditure for titling fees, surveys, or the like. So that was, that was specifically addressed in here. In addition, there is a non-waiver of immunity, again, acknowledging that the, the seller's a political subdivision, and doesn't waive any of its rights as a political subdivision that it has under North Dakota law. And that. Oh. And sorry, just for clarification, I, I, maybe for the commission's humor, there was an initial discussion when they, they proposed language about the conveyance of, the conveyance of minerals and other property, and that was clarified that, that no, the city would not be selling any of its mineral rights, that they were probably worth more than the, than the purchase price itself anyway. So, that, it's just a, it's just a surface interest that's being conveyed.
Okay. We have about a minute. If there's any quick questions? Or comments?
There's a lot of contingencies in here.
Yes.
So, I mean, the earnest money we're getting is really not really ours. I mean, I mean, if you read 4.2, the due diligence period, I mean, for any reason, it basically says if they don't want to buy it after the due diligence period, they can walk away.
That is true. The, unless, unless there is a breach by, in the event that the purchase agreement goes unfulfilled, and unless there's a breach by the buyer, they will, that earnest money will be returned to them.
So what, what would be a breach?
If they.
Because, I mean, if it basically says for any reason, they can back out, what, how could they breach the contract in any way, for any reason they can back out?
If there is not any reason to, so, for example, if they decided that the, I don't know if, if you want me to address this particular question after the next.
Probably.
Yeah.
I might have some follow-up.
Okay.
Okay. All right. We'll move on to our 5:15 public hearing, zoning text amendment, Chapter 39, downtown and commercial zoning district changes. And that will be handled by Mr. Josephson and Mr. Hadley.
Stephen will do the first part. I will do the landscape ordinance. That's how that's set up. Thank you, Mr. President.
Sure. Good evening, Commissioner Steve Josephson, county, county planner. Here in city capacity, I'm bringing forward to you something that went to Planning and Zoning Commission, which was, we've been working on this for, for a couple of years too, is, is some changes to the downtown commercial zoning district. And primarily, change is going to be to have some design standards. These are very similar to what the city of Bismarck has, where they're not overly prescriptive in terms of pick five colors, pick three styles or whatever of buildings. But it's, it's meant, meant so that if there's new construction, or if there's reconstruction of existing buildings in the downtown area, that they be similar, you know, they be similar in outward appearance, and also in color and scheme and so on. So what proposing is to add a whole section into, into, into chat, into Article 39.07, that, you know, that, that goes, that goes through this. And then there were some other changes to it, to, to the, to the, the table of, table of uses. Went through and looked at uses that were currently in the code that maybe didn't, didn't make a lot of sense to have them downtown as permitted, as permitted uses would be more appropriate in other zoning districts, and then looked at some that maybe aren't in the downtown, the downtown commercial district. Just a reminder, the downtown commercial district is meant to encourage the kind of high-density down, mixed-use development in the, in, in the downtown core of the, of the city. So there's a lot, there is much emphasis on walkability, of having businesses on the bottom floor, and then residential on the, on the top floor. Let me hand this out. I don't know if this was part of the packet, but I know when we went to planning and zoning, there were commissioners who asked, who asked, well, what, what area of the city is the downtown commercial zoning district? So I'm going to go ahead and hand this out. So it's, it's the, I guess you could call it the beige or tan area. That's, that's on your map. That's the, that's the downtown commercial area. So it would be an amendment to 39.07 to add those design standards in there, which would be, they would be reviewed administratively. If some, if an applicant had issues with it, there's an appeal process where it would go to city, to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Also, one of the things I wanted to point out in, in Table 4.2, which is in 39.04, one of the uses that actually Attorney Murtha brought up was that, was mini breweries and distilleries, which seems to be a popular use, especially in, in smaller cities across the country, and is also helps to drive, helps to drive economic development in those, you know, in those areas too. And we didn't really have anything here that defined, you know, that defined that. So that's also a use that was added, not only in the DC zoning district, but also community commercial and general commercial zoning districts. So this is the first reading of this. This went to Planning and Zoning Commission and received a recommendation of approval, and we're here to, the staff is bringing this before county, city commission. And we're here to, staff is bringing this before county, city commission tonight for approval, the first reading.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Josephson. Any questions? Comments? And ordinance number?
1650.
Any questions? Not? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Open the public hearing on ordinance 1650. If anyone has any comments or concerns of ordinance 1650, please come forward, state your name, and let the commission know your concerns. Seeing no one from the public, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners? Comments, questions?
I'm sorry, President Decker, one thing that's attached to your map, I did want to tell you, we have worked with the downtown association on this, and you'll see in the back of the map is a letter, is a letter that Kristi Schwartz, the president of the downtown association, signed. So there, we've worked, anything that involves the downtown, we bring to them for their, their, so that they can work with the city on it.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I would move to approve ordinance number 1650.
Okay, we have a motion to approve?
Second.
The second. Any further discussion, questions or comments for staff? If not, we'll vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. First reading of ordinance 1650 is passed. Mr. Hadley, landscaping and screening standards.
Yes, thank you, President Decker. This item has been discussed for a number of months at the planning commission level. The planning commission made a recommendation, and the ordinance that's in front of you lessens the number of trees considerably from what's required right now for new construction. One is that being one tree in a front yard and two on a side yard. And there's some other minor changes that happened. Planning commission did hear this on a public hearing on March 21st with no opposition or testimony. The staff and planning commission would recommend approval of this ordinance. I believe Ms. Murtha drafted the, the ordinance as is, and if there's any questions on some of the changes, she did make a few changes so it read better. She would be more than happy to address those changes. But the real intent of the ordinance was to simplify what we currently do, and also make sure and ensure that we're going to have, promote urban forestry within the city.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hadley. Any questions, comments?
From my understanding, what we did was we reduced the number of trees that are required, and then we give more leeway to the homeowner as far as placement of those trees.
Now, no, they're still required to plant one in the front, two on the side if it's a corner lot.
Okay.
Where the formula before, if I understand, was much more complicated if you had a corner lot.
Right.
You could end up with 15 trees down your, side of your house.
Right.
So this lessens that. And this, trust me, this has been discussed in planning and zoning. It, it does simplify it. I, I had, I still have my reservations, and they've heard it. I'm not gonna... As I stated in planning and zoning, I, my preference would be to allow people to plant, just require three trees, and you plant them wherever you want. But I seem to be in the minority there, so... I do have one other concern, though, with the official list of plant materials, where we're designating what you can plant. You know, it's on private property. We're telling you, you only have, and I, I've never seen the list, so I don't know, maybe it's 100 different trees. Mr. Hadley?
It's not.
Okay.
It isn't.
So how many trees?
There's not that many that actually thrive in Dickinson, North Dakota.
So we're basing it upon trees that can thrive?
Thrive, and then the ones that we want to prohibit would be ones that aren't typically street-type trees, cottonwoods, you know, what have you, that aren't something that Mr. Zurov or Mr. Kuvos would like in the city right-of-ways, because they, they tend to do damage to either sewers or infrastructure that we have, or their liability. There, there are some other trees, if people wanted to go to a higher zone four tree and utilize some of those, we could incorporate those in the list. I think the intent in this ordinance is to have the city forester keep that list. We have a list that the building department has right now that they use. That would just be added to by the city forester when they're on staff.
And if we don't have a city forester, who decides who can plant what?
That, that comes between the building official and myself, I guess. The building official is the one on the ground that works with the people. Typically, if there's any kind of questions, they, they work with them. If there's something that, I, I went through that initial list and cross out some of the trees that weren't appropriate for our city right-of-ways. And that's what we were typically having people do, is plant them in the right-of-ways.
And I could also offer a, a point of clarification with regards to the official list. The, under subsection A, the official list of plant materials had been, had been, has been in the code, so it has, it's been there, and it's, you're, the way the ordinance has been reading is that you're supposed to be drawing from this list to be, for materials installed in landscape areas. The addition under subsection B reiterates and references back up to the list. So it's, I don't, I don't know that it's expanding the requirements that there were, that were there in place already, so much as it is clarifying that, yes, we're still talking about the list here too.
I, I guess my concern is that who are we going to have? We're gonna have the tree police going around making sure that we have the right trees and...
I don't have as much problem with telling people what kind of trees they can plant, because, you know, we don't want the cottonwoods that are spreading cotton all over the neighborhood. We don't want the ones that we're tearing out left and right now, the old elms that are a mess. I don't have any problem saying ones we don't. What I kind of have a problem lately is telling people that they got to plant the tree or trees. You know, there's elderly people, or anybody really, that might want to have and build a retirement home and not have to clean up after a tree in the fall, and so on. You know, so I kind of struggle with that, you know, especially as I get older and I got a couple of trees, and every fall, I, there's a lot of work to them. You know, so I have more of a problem telling people that they have to plant them, that they can't plant.
Any other concerns, commissioners? I just don't want us to be like an HOA. That's what they, I get the feeling, like the city's an HOA. Like, we're going around saying, this is exactly what you can plant, where you can plant it. So I guess that's my concern. I mean, we, we restrict a lot of things already. When it's private property, private property.
Mr. President, if I could, I believe Leonard, you know, has received some favorable comments from the construction community that, on this too, as, as those are being put in compared to what we've had in place now. So I think, I think that there is a, there is a general moving forward on this. I don't know that it's perfect, but it is, it is a step in the right direction from where we were.
Yeah, I would say...
It simplifies, yes.
Yeah, it simplifies it, and I, I think still having a requirement, because one of the things that Dickinson, again, stands out as a community, is when you pull into Dickinson, the number of trees that our community has. And I've been to similar-sized communities that didn't have any requirements, and when there aren't any requirements, there aren't any trees. And that definitely impacts the overall look, livability, and resale value of your community. And we have been a tree city for a reason, and there are some accolades that go with that, and there are some people that look at that as a community, and that's a draw for them. I think easing the restrictions, making it simpler, is a good step, but to do away with the standards would be way to the other extreme. I think this is a very good compromise.
Well, and I'm not opposed to trees, and I, I think everybody knows that. I've just said, I don't think we should have the requirement, I, you know, we require three trees. I'm fine with it, right? And then put them wherever you want. But now, as it sits, it's like you're going to put one in your front yard, and you're going to put two in your side yard if you're a corner lot. So my, I guess my, my opposition the whole time is where the trees have to be.
Sure.
So I would, you know, defer to the landowner, how they want to landscape. I mean, some of these lots are skinny and narrow, and they have just a patch of grass in the front, and then you require a tree in the front yard. It maybe doesn't fit into the landscape. So, again, I'm not against trees.
Well, if it's new development, you're gonna have city codes the size of the lot. You're not gonna have a little patch in the front with any of our city codes for building. And again, I also agree, I don't like it where we're telling them they have to, have to plant a tree, because I may not want to plant a tree, and I may not want to have to take care of it, but this isn't something I'm gonna fall on my sword over, so.
Right. I think that's a good compromise.
My, my issues have been clear from the beginning. First of all, getting away, getting rid of temporary certificates of occupancy has been my number one thing. And I would guess this is 90% of the ones we have outstanding, if somebody hasn't put their grass in or hasn't planted a tree. Once we let them in the house, even with a temporary, we're not kicking, we can't kick them back out. It's impossible. So, I mean, we need, I see we've come up with some kind of thing here, but what are we gonna do? My question, next question is, what are we gonna do with the houses that we've been going back on, telling people they didn't meet the requirement before? I mean, at what point do we, how far are we gonna keep going back?
I believe, Commissioner, if I could address that, I think that the intent was to not go back, the intent of the discussions through the planning commission, and then just how I think staff has looked at that is that we aren't going to move backwards. This is going to be what we have in the books to start and move forward. So if there's any that's in the process that Leonard's working with right now, they'd finish with that, but his, his staff would not go back and look at the older ones that they're talking about. And correct me if I'm wrong, Leonard, but I think that's what we, what the plan was.
But let's say in five years, somebody goes in and takes all these trees out of their new house, five years from now. Then what are, we gonna go back and tell them, well, you have to put them back in? Or when then, what if the house is 20 years old?
If it's in, if it's in the city right-of-way, then they actually would have to get a permit from the city forester to remove it. If it's in their front yard, it would just be removed.
These are just some of the questions that pop in my head.
Great questions.
You know, there's houses around here that don't have any grass, that are 15 years old. I mean, so if they cut these trees down in five years, we're just gonna let them go? I mean, if they're all in their front yard, obviously, not in the right-of-way. Then it doesn't matter?
I think it matters, but we don't want to do the continued follow-up on it, so it's either we do the continued follow-up on the trees on a regular basis, or we don't.
My final question is, is what is the fine or penalty if they don't comply with the correction notice?
I think I'll maybe defer to Ms. Murtha.
The finer, and I might actually...
So I mean, if they don't put the trees in, what, what are we gonna do?
The finer penalty provision is the catch-all provision, and I know what provision it is. It's the catch-all provision in, for failure to comply with the building code, but as to what that exact amount is, I would defer to administrators of the code.
President Decker, Commissioners Leonard, Flint Building Official. To date, we have not fined or administered a fee for not planting a tree. However, it seems like planning and zoning all over again. To, if somebody removes a tree, I, I guess I don't concur with that we can't do anything. If, if we have it on the books, I don't think there's a beginning or an end date. Yet, if there's a tree in the front yard, there's a tree in the front yard. I don't know where you can start and stop. You really can't do that. I do agree with Mr. Fredericks that taking the temporary out of this, that's essentially been my goal all along also, so.
So, Mr. Frederick, are you basically saying, what's the point of having an ordinance when we have no way to, no checks and balances associated with it?
Well, I mean, do we want our staff driving around looking for trees all day long? Is that the plan, or?
If the trees are planted in the right-of-way, it's generally, in the past, has been the city forester. That's essentially, you, you would need a permit to take a tree out of the right-of-way. Once it's on private property, to, to chase it around is impossible.
But that's what, that's the point I'm trying to get at. It's, at what point does it be enforceable?
If you drive around the older neighborhoods in, in town, you see a, a pattern of trees. The ordinance has always been there, but then periodically, the trees disappear. With the tornado, trees had disappeared, they didn't get put back in. We're not going back. We generally catch that if somebody adds on to a house, builds a garage, and generally, we try to bring it up to date, just like we would a public sidewalk. But we don't, to, to drive around and look for just the trees, I mean, it's, we have a better use of our time.
That's what I would hold. I mean, to me, the, the ordinance is much better, I mean, than it was, obviously. There was, I mean, as a builder, I mean, I've built a corner house lot where they required seven trees in the front yard, with the old formula. I mean, it was crazy. I mean, you wouldn't even have room for seven trees in the front yard. So, front and side yard, I should say. I mean, so, I mean, this is a lot better. It just, how far do we want to keep taking it? I, I don't really know.
President Decker?
Yes.
I, I think the, the way staff interpreted the discussion we had at planning and zoning about, we want to, you know, kind of draw the line in the sand today and, and look forward, was that the ordinance applies to all new development. And so while most of our ordinances would apply to any property in town, this one is just saying new development. So we're, we're really not looking back, and I, I guess, you know, commissions 10 years down the road might say, hey, we want you to go after all of these properties and, and have them plant trees. The way this ordinance is written, and I guess my interpretation of it would be that it's for new developments, it's, it's going to be looked at with the building permit, although the issuance of the CO won't be tied to the tree. And I was just trying to look up what the, the non-compliance fee is in our fee schedule, and I have not found yet.
And it goes back to the, the best use of staff time.
Right.
So...
I would agree with what Commissioner Altman said. I think this is a great compromise coming from where we were before. I would agree that, you know, I think it's good to see trees, and it does create a very livability space or appearance for our community. So I would support this, this ordinance as is.
Okay, any other questions, comments? If not, I'd look for a motion.
I would move to approve the first reading.
Oh, yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Altman. This is the first reading of ordinance 1651, if I'm correct.
Yes.
So we will open it up to the public, and if there's anyone from the public that would like to come forward, have any concerns with 1651, please come forward, state your name, and let the commission know your concerns. Seeing no one from the public, I'll close the public hearing. We have a motion from Mrs. Trustum to approve.
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Altman. Any further discussion or questions? Comments?
You find that Mr. Kuvos did it, or?
I haven't. We, we thought we had our fee schedule all worked out there.
We haven't used correction notices for a very long time, so I'm not sure that it's a catch-all or not, but...
We have non-compliances, $250 per day.
That suffice? All right, we have a motion to approve with a second. Any further discussion or questions? Very none, we'll vote. Mrs. Trustum? Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Altman's?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes no. Motion, uh, the ordinance is passed, first reading sixteen fifty-one. Go on to our next timetable, uh, five-thirty, future land use amendment. Mr. Hadley?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's a future land use amendment from mixed use to industrial for, uh, property at seventeen ninety-six South Main. It's actually south of Twentieth Street. It's the old Stiffus, uh, tank site, um, south of town. They're looking to do a future, uh, land use amendment, future land use amendment so they can, um, actually develop that site. The, um, planning commission, um, held a public hearing on the twenty-first and there was no opposition, there was a concern about noise that they're going to address. The reason they're doing this is they, um, want to basically deed restrict themselves to meet our overlay corridor standards, um, that we have on, along Highway twenty-two and the, the second item is very similar, it's up north. Um, the applicants are here and, you know, I think it would be good that, maybe you heard from them, because it does include a deed restriction that they're volunteering to actually deed restrict that property in the first four hundred feet, which is our overlay corridor, that would not allow some of the uses that would be typically allowed in that zoning district that they're going for. So this, this would be a future land use amendment to industrial from mixed use. Um, and I think with that, maybe, if you have any questions of me on that process, but I think maybe hearing from them on that might be the best way to go.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hadley. Is there a representative?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the commission. Andrew Schrank with Highlands Engineering, uh, representing the owner of the property. Um, as Mr. Hadley had stated, the owner is requesting a change to industrial. This will allow, uh, an additional manufacturing facility on this property to help expand their current operations, uh, which are located just north of, of this site. Um, some of the restrictions Mr. Hadley's referring to, um, many of these are already included in your zoning ordinance, your corridor, corridor overlay district along Highway twenty-two would restrict a lot of uses along this property and actually require some aesthetic, uh, building facades, lighting, those kinds of elements as well. Um, some things that we've done in addition to that are required tree plantings around the entire site to help screen, uh, any outdoor storage or industrial uses on the property from neighboring properties. Uh, we've also added that an opaque fence would be added around any outdoor storage areas to help screen those uses as well. Um, I guess with that, if there's any further questions, I'd be happy to address those.
Questions, comments? Mr. Schrank? I think it's a great improvement out there, I mean, I, for what's out there right now, so they've done a, a great job, so came through planning and zoning. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Comments?
Mr. President, I move we approve the future land use amendment.
Okay, um, if I may ask before we move on. The ordinance, um, that's presented to you contained two future land use amendments, so it's one ordinance for each of them. Uh, so I would ask if you would like to, I don't believe the second property has been discussed yet.
No.
Has it?
No, but.
So if, uh, if the commission would, uh, hear the second property and then can move and amend?
Okay.
Sure.
Okay. And then, Mr. Hadley, Great Lakes subdivision?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. The second one, obviously, future land use amendment from mixed use to, um, industrial as well. Um, on lots, as you see, one, two, four, Block One and eight, nine, ten, Block Two, Great Lakes subdivision, north of town along Highway twenty-two, uh, in the ETZ, the, in the same subdivision as SM fencing, just to give you an idea of the, the, the location. And it would be along, obviously, the highway corridor, the first four hundred feet. Uh, there's a map, I believe, in your packet that, that shows the, uh, red, um, red colored lots are the ones that we're discussing today. And, um, they'll have a subsequent zone change later on in the meeting as well, just like the first application.
Okay, is there a rep? Go ahead.
Sorry. Planning Commission had a meeting, uh, the twenty-first, there was no opposition, no comments whatsoever. They recommended approval and so did staff. Thank you.
Is there a representative from Great Lakes subdivision?
President Decker, Commissioners, Don Schmeling, Continental Real Estate, representing the owners and developers of the Great Lakes first subdivision, um, kinda along the line of the previous, uh, fellow, except ours was zoned commercial when the subdivision was approved, but it's approximately two miles from, um, say, the Walmart area to this property. We just have no demand whatsoever that far out of town for a commercial development. Um, it's been out there for five years, approximately. So we're trying to make that property more saleable, but we're doing the same thing, we're deed restricting the property. Um, landscaping for the first twenty feet, uh, screened-in fence behind that, um, facade, lighting, whatever, to try to make it look like the commission previously wanted it to look, keeping that corridor along Highway twenty-two to look good. But we'd like to do it through the industrial route instead of the commercial, so we're looking at doing limited industrial there. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Schmeling? Thank you.
Thank you.
And this is the first reading of ordinance sixteen fifty-two, if I'm correct. And I'll open up the public hearing of sixteen fifty-two. If there's anyone with any concerns on sixteen fifty-two, please come forward, state your name, let us know your concerns. Seeing no one from the public, I'll close the public, public hearing of sixteen fifty-two. Commissioners, any questions, comments for staff? Now I'd look for a motion on sixteen fifty-two.
Mr. President, move to approve first reading ordinance sixteen fifty-two.
Second.
We have a motion to approve with a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Altman's?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair, and chair votes aye. Sixteen fifty-two is approved, the first reading. Mr. Hadley, uh, rezone petitions?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, State Third Edition, this is a rezoning petition from limited commercial to medium density R2 for Lot Four, Block One of State Third Edition here in Dickinson. It's, uh, directly south of the REC Center. Um, this, this item was heard actually too on the planning and zoning agenda on May, March twenty-first. Um, there was no opposition, actually, all of the adjacent property owners submitted letters of approval, um, for this request. The intent is to build either a single-family attached or a single-family home on the site. Staff and the planning commission, uh, would recommend approval of this.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hadley. Um, is there anyone representing the State Third Edition here? Not a, are there any questions for Mr. Hadley on this petition for a rezone?
Mr. President, the site, the site is just, um, east of the consolidated building over there, so it's in a residential area pretty much, so.
Just an empty lot.
Yeah, it's just an empty lot.
Hearing no questions or comments? Uh, Mr. Hadley, I, I would think that this, um, the ordinance, the sixteen fifty-three, that we will cover all three of these, so if you wanna continue with?
Okay. Yes, thank you. Thank you, sir. It's seventeen ninety-six South Main is the, um, Worthington site that we just discussed in the Flume, um, previously. It's south of town, Hill Stiffus site. Um, they're going from agricultural to industrial, um, for that particular property. Uh, the planning commission also conducted a public hearing on the twenty-first on this item. Uh, there was no other comments besides the, the concern on noise in the past on the site. Um, the developer is going to have a, a DA as part of a plat that they're gonna bring in this next month, and we will address, uh, further conditions on that, based on that. So anyway, the planning commission and city staff would recommend approval of that one. Great Lakes, as we just talked about, um, the Flume, this is a subsequent zone change from, um, general commercial to industrial, um, for the, the lots shown along Highway twenty-two north of town. Uh, planning commission also had a hearing on the twenty-first, uh, no opposition, no comments, um, for or against, and planning commission and staff would recommend approval.
Okay. Thank you, Planning Director Hadley. Any questions for Mr. Hadley or comments, or any further questions that may have come up for the two representatives before? So I would look for, uh, well, we'll first open up the public hearing on the first reading of ordinance sixteen fifty-three. Anyone from the public has any concerns or questions on the rezone petition of ordinance number sixteen fifty-three? Come forward and state your name. Seeing no one from the public, we'll close the public hearing. And I would look for a motion on ordinance sixteen fifty-three.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Altman's?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Ordinance sixteen fifty-three, the first reading is passed. Up next, we have a public hearing for special use permit of a daycare. Mr. Hadley?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this is a special use permit daycare at seven sixty-eight Fourth Avenue East. Um, it's a group daycare with a maximum of twelve children at one site, at one time. This actually was heard at the February, uh, twenty-first, twenty eighteen PZ meeting and, uh, we waited for compliance with some fire department requirements that they needed to resolve before we brought it to you. Those have been resolved and, um, they're ready to move forward. The applicant, during the hearing process, there wasn't any comments, negative comments from any of the neighbors, uh, planning commission and the city staff would recommend approval of this daycare. And it's a resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Hadley. Uh, resolution number?
Oh, eight, twenty eighteen.
Oh, eight, twenty eighteen. Okay. Any questions, um, for Mr. Hadley before I open up the public hearing? Yep. Uh, we have it listed as a public hearing.
Oh?
We have it listed as a public hearing, but.
I believe, I can't recall if it was required as a special use, just ready for approval.
What was that?
I believe, it does not require.
It doesn't.
Okay. Okay. We have it listed as public hearing, so. Um, questions or comments before we have a motion on resolution zero eight, twenty eighteen? Now I'd look for a motion.
So moved.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Yes.
And a second. Further discussion, questions for Mr. Hadley or staff? If not, we'll go ahead and vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Resolution zero eight, twenty eighteen passes. And that is the end of our timetable agenda. We will go back to our purchase agreement.
And, Mr. President, members of the commission, I was, I believe I was in the midst of attempting to ask, uh, answer, um, Commissioner Frederick's question with regards to why is the, um, return of the earnest money so pro buyer in this, uh, in this particular agreement? Um, and it is, and I'm not gonna say that it, that that isn't. Um, it, the, there are many circumstances under which it can be returned, and in fact, um, under five-point-two buyer condition subsection three, uh, indicates that buyer is satisfied with the property, uh, that, that this is kind of almost a catch-all with regards to their discretion. Um, they're going to indicate that they're satisfied with the property and, and within their sole judgment has determined that, that it can proceed with its planned use of the property without significant additional expense, uh, and is economically feasible, and that they're, we did ask, or when they requested this, is that, that be communicated at some time prior to closing. So, uh, there is a no less than thirty days prior to closing. So for example, if they were to communicate that everything is fine thirty days prior to closing, and then fifteen days prior to closing, come back and say, we changed our minds, it's not economically feasible, that would be indicative of a breach. So, yes, the, the agreement definitely narrows the scope of what would constitute a breach for the buyer. I will say then, in, um, discussions with regards to this purchase agreement, uh, we did attempt to take a, a big picture approach, which is, what are the terms that are pro buyer, what are the terms that are pro seller? And they're not, um, it's, it's not a one-for-one on each individual item, but I think overall the agreement represents a very good compromise. Uh, they, they, for example, provided for, uh, some things that if the parties were private individuals, that they would probably not have given on, and those would be the normal seller expenses that would be incurred. So if, uh, you had two private individuals, the seller would be expected to pay certain fees, and under the terms of this agreement, the city is not going to pay those fees at all, or, uh, in the event that some of the fees are incurred by the city, they're going to be reimbursed for all of it. So that is, that was definitely, uh, a benefit to the city. Um, so that, that would be, um, that would be my only comments with regards to, um, that, that particular term, that yes, it does give the buyer a lot of discretion.
So if they back out and say that we incur some fees, and they just say, no, we're out of here?
Then the city would have incurred those fees.
And where there's no reimbursement?
Correct. We did attempt to, through negotiation, reduce the, um, reduce the fees that are reimbursed as opposed to, for, uh, for example, at the onset of our discussions, uh, one of the fees that the city was going to incur and, and, and one of the costs was, the city was going to do the replating, um, hire the, uh, hire the, uh, the firm to provide the survey, and then at the end, at the closing, the city was going to be reimburse the cost for those. Since the beginning to the end of the discussions, those costs have been directly transferred over, uh, to the buyer, where they're hiring their own survey, they're providing for it. Um, those are all their costs now, they're not something that the city will be, uh, paying and then reimbursed, the buyer will be incurring.
Yeah, there's just, just a few things. I mean, it says closing will occur fifteen days after the due diligence period expires, but then down here, we say they have to give us notice thirty days prior if they're gonna buy the property.
They should know, yeah.
But, I mean, it, I mean, but they, they have up till the end of the due diligence period, so how can they, if they give us thirty days notice that they're gonna buy it, then they, up to here, they're supposed to close it within fifteen days, so that, that doesn't really make any sense.
I would, um, I would say that the subsection C with regards to, um, the economic feasibility is a, it's, that, those relate to their business plan for the property, whereas the due diligence period is relating to, is there something wrong with the property, not their business plan?
So can, I mean, most purchase agreements that I see, I mean, there's a, there's a set date where they have to remove their contingencies. I mean, they're not open to that? I mean, at some point, can't we say they, by certain date, they have to remove all these contingencies, like financing?
The, um, what we struggled with, with regards to the set dates, and I don't, I don't disagree, was the uncertainty with regards to the replating process and how long that would take. So would the survey be able to be accomplished on, on time, uh, what, to, in order to make the May agenda? What if it wasn't? Uh, what if it was delayed until June, in which case, then it wouldn't be, um, to the commission until July, and we wanted to have all that accomplished within the due diligence period? So there is a lot of, um, date uncertainty with initiating a purchase agreement now, but, um, our discussions center around the fact that, uh, you can either delay signing the purchase agreement until after the replat is completed, or, um, in which case you would have, be able to say, these are the dates certain, or you can initiate, uh, the purchase agreement earlier, prior to the replat being completed, um, and this, just understanding that the dates will have to move to accommodate whatever that legal process is, uh, for the replat. So it was, uh, those were the two options that were presented, and, um, I think to the, to the buyer's credit, they wanted to have the signed purchase agreement earlier as opposed to delaying until after, um, until after the replat, because that wouldn't be finalized until the summer. Very similar to why we don't. Very similar to why we don't even have a very firm Exhibit A would be the rationale.
It's just somewhat frustrating. We've been talking about this since October, and we're still three or four months away from even possibly closing this.
Any other comments, questions for Mrs. Murtha? I, I, I guess I would...my question is, is this something we do want to move to executive session at the end, or we comfortable with questions on this contract for...
I mean, I guess I feel it's been already negotiated, so...
Well, if we're going that route, is there any way where we can lock the earnest money once it is...
The, the buyers are well aware that this agreement, this agreement is subject to commission approval, and that, that this body may come back with concerns or requests with regards to some of the provisions. So it is coming before you as a draft, and, and again, because the, the replat process is going to take a certain amount of time, by all means, the commission should feel comfortable taking its time to negotiate the purchase agreement terms, because nothing can really be finalized until after that replat, anyway.
Any concerns, questions on...
In a way, that's written, it doesn't...we're not protected in any way, anyway, so, I mean, it doesn't matter if we sign it now or we wait till the replats are done. It really doesn't matter.
So you would like to see the earnest money be non-refundable?
Well, I mean, I'd like to have them show some good faith and performance. I mean, there's, there's nothing here right now that says that they're going to even do this. It just, if you feel in 45 days that it doesn't work out for them, then they can just walk away.
No, I did see that they publicly shared their, their renderings for the downtown project, so, I mean, I think, I think good faith is there. I mean, I completely understand what you say in regards to our protection and, but I do think that, that Odyssey Theater is, is pretty set on, on doing this building downtown, based on what they're communicating to the public.
They're generating a lot of excitement, I know that, so...
So then I, I would...
Be it good or bad excitement.
Right. I would, I would agree with Commissioner Frederick, then, then the change that we would want to make is that the $10,000 earnest money is non-refundable, because city staff will have time and energy into this, whether it happens or not. And you have indicated they posted their plans, so they are moving full steam ahead, so they should have no reservation about having that deposit non-refundable. Only reason it wouldn't happen is if something really unusual comes up, so that's part of doing business, but we as city staff have expensed into this too. So I would agree with Commissioner Frederick that the $10,000 earnest money is non-refundable under any circumstance, if it doesn't go through.
If that is the consensus of the commission, I, we, we will certainly convey that back, and I also wanted to offer, for no other purpose than just to, I believe it is indicative of additional evidence of moving forward, if I could ask the city engineer, Mr. Krupis, to weigh in on it. I believe he's had conversations with the firm that has been retained by Odyssey Theater's to perform the survey, and, and there has been work done on that, and if I could ask you to speak to that.
Yeah, I have spoke with their engineer, slat architect, it's the same firm, a few weeks ago, and that they're working forward on laying this plan, the building footprint out on the site, working on the survey. I haven't seen them out here today, but that's not to say they haven't been out here.
The, the firm that, that Odyssey had, had hired has been in contact with me, they're, they're working on the site plan and the survey. I just wanted to get squared away some details of what we would need to see as they bring the replat forward to planning and zoning. So I don't believe we've seen a submittal yet, but, but work on their end with their engineer and surveyor and, and architect is ongoing.
So when they, they submit, they'll be subject to our fees and our, I mean, if we need to have any review done, outside review done, like we do with any other developer, they'll be required to pay those fees?
Correct.
Now, do we have a consensus that we'd like it amended to have non-refundable earnest
That's my intention.
Well, that's, when we were going through that, this, this is the one, that's the one thing I wrote down.
Yep.
I mean, have them have something in the game.
I just, I just look at all the concessions that we're making...
Right.
Yep.
For them. I don't think that we're asking for too much for them to risk $10,000.
I don't either.
Mr. Steiner?
I think we should actually get the $10,000 as required regardless. I never go through another transaction like this from the beginning again. So, yep.
I'll second that. Okay. Ms. Trustum?
I agree with my fellow commissioners.
Okay. So...
I would ask that the commission table this item until the next meeting, and, and we will take the request. I don't believe a, a motion is needed...
Okay.
...to act on it. Table with the direction that we've received, we'll take it back to Odyssey and bring the, and bring the agreement back before you at the next meeting.
Okay. Mr. Kessel, you anticipate, or Mr. Krupis, anticipate any delays in the action that, of the theater as they're proceeding by this?
I don't believe so, Commissioner President Decker. As we've stated before, there's other things that they have to move forward with, and I, I don't...
I, I think it's a desire of the commission to have that earnest money non-refundable, and I would take that to them. Boy, I would, you don't think we need a motion to table this?
I, I don't believe a motion to table, no.
Okay. So then, we will move on. Chief Seabock, you're up with the 2018 fee schedule amendment.
Good evening, President Decker, commissioners. The fire department is before you tonight to ask for a resolution to amend the city fee schedule to make provisions for a $100 fee for a public fireworks display. We find ourselves now in, in a changing environment where there are entities and events within the city that meet the requirements of a public fireworks display, though they're coming to us for a permit. The permit already exists, the requirements for the permit exists because of our dealings in the past with the Rough Rider Commission and the city fireworks display, but it clearly showed that we've never had provisions for a fee because of our relationship with the Rough Rider Commission and how that's always worked, as it being the municipal display. So that's what we're asking for today, is that addition to the fee schedule.
Okay, thank you, Chief Seabock. Any questions? Any questions for staff or comments on Resolution 09-0018?
I believe this would be...oh, 09, I'm sorry. You're right.
I'm keeping track now, so...
I think if, you know, we have staff having to review permit applications, there should be some kind of, be involved. I mean, it costs money and takes our time, so I have no issue with it.
If there are no other comments or questions, I'd look for a motion on Resolution 09-0018. Move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion to approve in a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing non will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Resolution 09-0018 is passed. Next up, I know it says Mr. Kessel, but I have the resolution, so, or I, I should say I have the proclamation here.
You should have the mayor for the day read that.
I should have. She probably has way better eyesight than I do. I know that. So, "We have a proclamation for National Service Recognition Day, and the City of Dickinson, North Dakota proclamation, ende National Service Recognition Day. Whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet our challenges, and whereas the nation's City of Dickinson is increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet their needs, and whereas AmeriCorps and Senior Corps participants address the most pressing challenges facing our communities, from educating students for the jobs of the 21st century to fighting the opioid epidemic, to responding to natural disasters, to supporting veterans and military families. And whereas national service expands economic opportunity by creating a more sustainable, resilient communities and provides education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve. And whereas AmeriCorps and Senior Corps participants serve in more than 50,000 locations across the country, bolstering the civic neighborhood and faith-based participants or organizations, excuse me, that are so vital to our economic and social well-being. And whereas national service participants increase the impact of organizations they serve, both through their district service and by managing millions of additional volunteers, and whereas national service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in the community's solutions and lever, leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community National service participants demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making intensive commitment to, this is all run together, service, a commitment that remains with them into their future endeavors. And whereas the Corporation for National and Community Service shares a priority for local leaders nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and is joining the National League of Cities, the National Association of Counties, Cities of Service, and the local leaders across the country for National Service Recognition Day on April 3, 2018. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Scott Decker, President of the City Commission, do hereby proclaim April 3, 2018 as National Service Recognition Day, and encourage residents to recognize the positive impact of national service in our community, to thank those who serve, and to find ways to give back to their communities. In witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause this seal to be affixed." And I would look for a motion to approve this proclamation.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to approve in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And we'll move on to Mr. Kessel. He has some reports.
President Decker, we do have the National History Day Museum Fieldwork Report that Museum Director Furman would like to provide, and I believe Denver Fowler is going to follow up with a presentation as well.
That's correct. President Decker, commissioners, just like to make a brief report on some museum operational issues and National History Day, and then I'm going to be turning it over to our curator of paleontology. Through March 31st, I am very pleased to report that our admissions are up 34% over the same period last year. Our income is up just a little over 16% over last year at the same time. I think people are getting the, the message that the Dickinson Museum Center is open for business during the winter, so very, very pleased with that. National History Day originated in Cleveland in 1974, growing from 129 students that year to over 500,000 per year today. Students compete in junior and senior divisions, creating solo or team projects based on the annual theme. This year's theme is conflict and compromise, and on March 22nd, the Dickinson Museum Center hosted one of North Dakota's regional competitions. Judging teams were made up of museum center and TR center staffs as well as DSU education majors. We elevate, or, excuse me, we evaluated and critiqued 58 participants in the junior division, which is grade six, seven, and eight, and these students originated from two schools, Dickinson Middle School, which was their first year participating in the program, and also the Elgin New Leipzig Middle School. Projects consisted of 36 exhibits, two performances, two papers, and two websites. All contestants were provided with feedback to help prepare for the next step, which is held at the Heritage Center in Bismarck on April 13th, from which the top entries will journey to College Park, Maryland for the national competition in June. There are kids who participated this year who have been to nationals before. We certainly saw projects we thought were more than worthy of winning the state and going on to nationals, so we're very, very excited and pleased to be able to start this, which we hope is going to be an annual tradition for the museum center. Onto probably the more exciting news for everybody is a, a chance to look ahead to what's going to be happening in our paleontology division going forward into the summer field work. I'm very happy also to mention that just today, based on solicitations and presentations from our paleontologists, we received a $1,500 donation to support field work this summer, which should help us accomplish some great things. And to tell you about what we're going to try to get done this summer and the vision for the paleontology side of our operation, that is the Badlands Dinosaur Museum, I'd like to call forward our curator, Dr. Denver Fowler.
Yeah, well, thank you very much. I guess I can use this clicker to advance my slides. So when I was brought here a couple of years ago, I was told to make the museum into a world-class museum, and so I thought I'd share with you some of the aims that I have for the, for the institution, just to bear in mind through some of the things I'm going to say and show you. So I think these are realistic aims for the museum, both in the short and long term. So to have the finest display of real dinosaur fossils between Chicago and Bozeman, I think that's realistic. To be a regional leader in dinosaur research and field work, we're starting to approach that. And to develop into, into an institution with a collection of international importance, that obviously takes time, but I think you'll see that we've made a few steps. So just a little review of some of what's happened in 2017. We started our new membership program, and this is part of a sort of broader attempt to bring in some more money and outside and, and local support. This is something I've been working on a bit recently, and this is our new website, which should be quite glossy and hopefully help bring in some more of that support. It's not active yet, but it will be soon. This is a new exhibit we put in called Eggs, because we had an awful lot of eggs already in the collection, so I was trying to reuse a lot of what we already had and throw in some new things as well. So this focuses on dinosaur growth and some of the new things that we've learned in the last 20 years that have changed the way we look at dinosaur evolution. We've moved Bill the Triceratops out of the lab. He sent, he sent, spent 20 years sat there in the lab where we couldn't really appreciate him, so we moved him out into the exhibit. Says they're designed and built by Brooks. There's a beautiful new base that's been added to this, and that was built by one of our participants of the Experience Works Program. So he's, he's done a great job with that, if you come to the museum and see Bill out in the display. And that's given us a lot more space in the lab, so we've been able to bring in some volunteers. So we've had people from the local high school, and then Destiny, who's, she's a trained nurse, actually, and she's been working in the lab as well. This has brought in about 1,500 hours of volunteer hours last year, and many, many more hours in the field work for my field crews. We have three published papers last year. You can just about see the yellow highlighted parts. I believe this is the first time that primary research papers have been published with the Dickinson Museum Center brand, if you like, put there on the paper. So we're putting out published research as well as part of the project. And something you've heard about a little bit from Bob, I think, is the fossil storage. So this is some of the cabinets that we got for a very good price, so we can store some of these fossils, and we're currently working on getting us BLM repository status so that we can store these fossils in perpetuity here in Dickinson and have them on display as well. So last year, we, what we're going to put in those cabinets, some of these new fossils. So last year, we did this presentation on the 2017 field work, so I'm going to show you some of those things, and what we're going to be going back to this year to collect some new material. So we're working in the Judd River Formation of Montana, this first site, digging up a new armored dinosaur is a pretty cool specimen. We're basically working in that purple area. Maybe we can get the, yeah, there we go. There's some purple areas... There's some purple areas, the Judith River Formation, so this first site is at Kennedy Cooley. Here's Kennedy Cooley, right at the bottom of the Cooley. We were helping out these school kids a few years ago, and I was looking in that coal and came across some bone. You can see some of these little white bits of bone sticking out here. Oops, I think I just turned it off. There we go. And this is what they were. These are armor plates from an armored dinosaur called an Ankylosaur. So, this was very exciting, not just because it was an Ankylosaur, which are quite rare, but because dinosaurs are extremely rare in that coal layer. There's only one described species, and it's this weird Xenoceratops horned dinosaur. So, whatever it was that we had, it should be a new species. So, we went back last year, and we dug a big hole in the ground, and we came across quite a lot of the skeleton. We came across most of its leg bones, although none of its foot bones. And this, which is the skull. It's the top of the skull. If I just do a little interpretation there for you, you can see the eye sockets underneath these little horns, these are the nostrils, and then there's all sorts of bony plates on the surface, armor plates. So, this is what you really need to be able to tell what it is you've got. Turns out, there are two different families of Ankylosaurus, these armored dinosaurs. There's one that has a tail club and one that doesn't. We've got this one down here. It's got like a football helmet-type shaped head. So, we've got a new species of nodosaur. Oh, and also at the site, we have lots and lots of amber, so I'm hoping that we can get a collaboration going with a researcher who works on amber, because I expect with the amount of amber we have, we will have some amber insects. And just like the dinosaurs, there are no described insects from that coal layer either, so there will be some new species of insect, lucky us. So, back in the lab, we've been doing some preparation on these bones. So, there's an armor plate being cleaned. Here's another armor spike from the shoulder. This one's another armor plate. That's an infection pit where it was injured. This is the skull as it was just recently. This is the snout. This is the inside of the skull, if you like. It's been flipped over. This is the snout here, the palate. This is the ball on the back of the skull that fits into the neck, the attachments for the lower jaw. Really quite a spectacular skull. And again, because it's a new species, this is the only one of its kind. An unexpected bonus at the site was this. This is part of the frill of a small horned dinosaur, a bit like a Triceratops, but it's got these weird lines on it. We only came across this last week, I think, when it was being cleaned. These weird lines are actually pretty cool. This is some research that I did a few years ago, and this is, these are tooth marks from a Tyrannosaur made on a Triceratops frill, similar sort of thing. So, these marks are tooth marks. They're Tyrannosaur tooth marks where a Tyrannosaur has eaten this specimen. So, we hope that there'll be more of this specimen at the back of the quarry when we go back this year. All these tooth marks, we used to, this is a promotion image from that piece of research that we did a few years ago called How to Eat a Triceratops. And this piece of research is actually the basis for the new mount of the T-Rex, the nation's T-Rex. This is what the Smithsonian are building their exhibit around. This is the centerpiece, which is pretty cool and somewhat flattering.
You, it starts with the head first, not the soft parts.
Ah, well, you see, they probably ate the soft parts first, sure. They were scraping the last meat from the head. That's actually one of the important points of the research. So, this is something else that's on display at the Smithsonian. This is something I found in 2008. Not that I'm going on about what's in the Smithsonian's sort of bragging, but just making the point that we have the facility, the capability to have these kinds of things on display. I'm actually trying to get casts of these specimens for Dickinson, the first, the larger specimen one that I found. So, we have that level of quality already. We just have to get some more specimens out of the ground. So, we'll be going back to Ankylomania in June of this year to collect more of that Ankylosaur. So, some more sites that we got last year that we're going to be going back to. On the table here, I brought a cast of this specimen with me called Jacksalmyhadrosaur. You can see, this is as it was in the field, a sort of slab of sandstone sticking up out of the ground. And what you can see in that is this white bone is the fallen of Abracilophosaurus, we think. We haven't found the head yet. We hope to get that this year. I was going to show you a preparation video, but I have lots of slides, so I will just quickly skip to the prepped specimen. So, it says a dinosaur mummy for Dickinson. Well, we were very fortunate. When we were cleaning the rockaway from around the bones, we started seeing little patches of skin preserved. So, this is all skin down here. It surrounds the pinky finger, and then there's a little bit of the pad that it would have walked on. So, this is pretty cool. Here's a little close-up of that skin. You can even see the individual scales just about in this photo. So, this is a pretty amazing specimen. We can have our own dinosaur mummy here. Hopefully, there'll be more of this in the ground when we go back this summer. Oh, and this is us molding and casting. That's my wife, Liz, molding and casting the cast that we can see here. So, we'll go back there in July, August. We've been looking for more sites. This is a bone bed of duckbills. I don't know quite how to deal with this. It's about 150 feet long, and it's got dozens, if not 100, dead duckbill dinosaurs. All the white that you can see is bone, and this is just a very small part of it. I call this the Choking River Bone Bed, because it was a very bad day for these duckbills. They almost have drowned or something. And this is a skull of a baby. These are all the teeth in the tooth sockets. This is a very exciting site that we'll be going back to and taking a look at. But what I'm most excited about is our main site for the summer, which is one of our new Tyrannosaurs. So, these are teeth. We get a lot of teeth in the area where we're looking. And this is the mounted skeleton that you've seen at the museum, but this is a cast. So, this is what we found originally. This is just a claw, and there's part of a toe bone. And then after a little bit of digging, this is what we saw in the cliff. So, here is a metatarsal. There's another one behind it. This is the other foot facing this foot, and there's one of the toe bones. Oops. Go back. There we go. And here's another edge of a metatarsal. And this is the ankle that goes with this foot. So, what we have is both feet facing each other in the cliff, and then articulated to the leg, which goes into the cliff. This is about the most exciting sign I have ever found, so we're going to go back and excavate this year, and hopefully, we might have something really as good as this. This is a specimen that was found in a very similar situation. The feet actually of this specimen are missing. So, here, you can see the feet are very close together, very like ours, going up into the ankle region and up into the leg. So, we realistically might be able to bring something of this quality to Dickinson. It's very, it's going to be a very big specimen. It's bigger than that white one on display in the museum. So, we're hoping that we can get in touch with the military base and maybe get some help, helicopter-ing out some jackets. I actually had, there was a helicopter captain came by the museum about a year ago who expressed an interest in helping us out with that. So, I'm going to get in touch with them and see if they will help us. Oh, but we haven't just got one Tyrannosaur, we've got three. So, this one is bigger, and this one is smaller, but really good quality, and we'll hopefully hit those in future years, but three Tyrannosaurs is kind of ridiculous. And we have many, many more sites I haven't even told you about, some of our really exciting ones, other exciting ones. So, some new exhibits for summer this year, and these are some old clawed predatory dinosaurs, but they're a bit out of date now, so I've been working on updating these and talking a little bit about the research that's been done since they were made. So, this is some of my personal research, comparing the feet of birds of prey, the different-sized claws on the toes and the curvatures tell you a lot about how they capture and kill their prey. So, we look at those same proportions in different kinds of dinosaurs, and we can say about how they would have hunted and killed their prey as well. So, we're having some new models made for this exhibit. This is a little weird guy called Mononikeen with just one big claw on its fallen. And this is a dinosaur called Akaroraptor. Oh, these are all animals that lived here in North Dakota. If you dig about 500 feet down in your backyard, you might find one of these. So, this is Akaroraptor. It's kind of our version of Velociraptor, and it's beating up a Didelphodon, this kind of ancient mammal. And these really are superb models. We have them at the museum now. They're not on display yet, but these are the best feathered dinosaur models in North America. I don't think that's, I don't think that's too big of a claim. The guy who made them is a guy called Boban Filipovic from Serbia, and he surprised himself with just how well he did. He stepped up a level with the quality of the models he made. And so, it's something that we can really show off and use in our publicity, et cetera. We've also applied for some grants, National Geographic Explorers Grant, to work at a site, which I haven't told you about, which has baby dinosaurs preserved in collapsed burrow structures, a bit like prairie dogs, really quite amazing, and some education grants. And I think Bob just told you about some of our new fieldwork sponsors. So, just going back to those aims again, I really think that this is possible. We already have world-class specimens and world-class sites. We have a research program which is growing, and I think with support and building the way that we're building, we can build a world-class museum here in Dickinson with some of the great specimens we have. So, if you would all like to visit the museum at some point, I will show you some really great things that I didn't have time to show you today, some really fantastic specimens. And thank you.
No, thank you. This is exciting. I mean, not only the T-Rexes, but the new dinosaur and the work you're doing is amazing. I commend you and the staff there. I mean, it is, I think, another thing to put Dickinson on the map, you know, and you guys are doing amazing work.
And I would just like, I was fascinated with that, and I think that, you know, not enough people know how lucky we are to have you and your team, so thank you for everything you guys are doing, and I will be there soon, because I want to know more.
Well, please do. Anybody come up and see, because we have some really nice things, some really, really tiny things, too. I'm not quite sure how I'm going to display those.
Very good. Any other comments, questions? Well, thank you again. Exciting.
There's the home, by the way. Just ask the little ones now. Drives her own with that.
Well, thank you again. Very exciting. Mr. Kessel, Crooked Crane.
Wanted to provide an update to the City Commission. You are all aware, well aware that the Crooked Crane Trail Phase 1 has been completed, and that was on the north side of the lake. But we have two additional phases that will hopefully fully encompass the lake itself, bringing the total mileage of the project to over 17 miles. And the current phase that we're looking at is this southwest trail, and it'll be much different than the trail that was just completed. This is a hard surface, concrete pathway. This is going to be more natural in its environment. It will not have a hard surface. It most likely will have some kind of a soft surface. Still, if you want to hike, bring your dogs. If you want to run, if you want to mountain bike, those are all things that you can still do on this pathway and commune with nature. There will be overlooks, there will be benches, there will be markers. And one of the more difficult things for us, and which is why this phase is actually, you might ask, why isn't this your next phase? Well, the difficulty here is this water crossing. The railroad goes right across there, and they, of course, own about 150 to 200 feet from the center line of the railroad, which does bring it out into the water, which means that we need a bridge or some other structure to get over that water, and it's a fairly good distance. You're talking 400 to 500 feet in distance there. So, we're looking into ways in which to traverse that, but in the meantime, this is most likely going to be Phase 2. I want to thank Park and Rec Director Kramer. He is leading the charge on Phase 2 of the Crooked Crane Trail. We do have a committee that is helping us out. We've decided not to make an application for the Octor Heritage Grant. April 1 was the deadline for that application. We have some debate on the trail surface. It'll still be some kind of soft surface, but we've been looking into different varieties of trail surfaces with the type of weather and the type of geology that's out there. We're just concerned that grubbing two inches off the top may not be enough to withstand water, withstand snow, and other, you know, wind events that we get in Dickinson. So, needless to say, though, that this is, this will be the next phase that we move forward with. You might see some work yet this summer on that phase. It may not be completion, but we are actively pursuing construction on Phase 2. So, I'll take questions for anybody that has them. This has always been a multi-phase project, and hopefully, within the next two to three years, it'll be done.
Any questions for Mr. Kessel on the Crooked Crane?
So, where is the access for Phase 2? How do you enter?
There's a couple of different ways. It's hard to see, but there is a roadway here. Many people call it Stronsky Road.
Stronsky's Bridge or Stronsky, yeah, the road.
Yep. So, there'll be an access point there. You can also access it from this side coming. This is the golf course, so our fire training site is over there. So, you could use the roadway to a certain point here. But the main walking way is probably Stronsky, might be the easiest way to get there anyways, to start your trek.
The east trailhead, a lot of people call it the new beach.
Yeah, there you go.
So, and there's a park there, a small park, and a boat ramp.
Yep. So, my next, if there's no more questions, my next report is on the downtown square. As most of you were aware and attended, we did have our public input meeting regarding the downtown square. It was held on March 27. We had approximately 115 people, very, very pleased with the attendance, the amount of feedback that we received. Most of the comments were very positive, things like build it, build it now, why isn't it built already, things such as that. The most consistent concern we received was regarding parking, which wasn't a surprise, but we will be trying to address that. Some of that may be utilizing existing parking in a different way, changing it to 90 minutes so that you turn that parking over more often and thereby creating more parking. So, we will be trying to address parking as we move forward with multiple downtown improvements. And I just wanted to point out that Jennifer Strange, the DDA Executive, new Executive Director, did a lot of work with regard to arranging that public input meeting. Kristy Schwartz, of course, was the Board Chair. She also did some work. And then J.L.G. is the staff that was hired, using funds that the City Commission provided to help us move forward. There will be another public input meeting. It'll be more of a presentation of what was learned from this event, and it'll result in a rendering, and we'll be presenting that in the near future. I believe May 10 is, don't quote me on the day, but I believe that's the day that we'll be looking at making that information known to the public. And when we firm up that date and time and place, we'll certainly announce that here at the Commission meeting.
I think you're correct. I just looked at May 10.
Okay. So, again, thank you for all of you who attended that meeting. We really appreciated the input, and we are taking it all to heart. It will be your downtown square. Any questions regarding the downtown square?
Questions, comments?
I would echo the, it was a great turnout. It was a great night, I think.
Far exceeded our expectations with regard to attendance.
Yes.
Yeah.
Packed house.
The last two, then, items. Attorney Martha will be taking the first one, and Attorney Martha and Deputy City Administrator Carlson will be taking the last one.
Mr. President, members of the Commission, with regards to the Koenig appeal, we just wanted to bring forward to you an update. Excuse me, that Ms. Koenig voluntarily dismissed her appeal to the North Dakota Supreme Court, and the stipulation for that dismissal has been enclosed with your materials for the meeting. Be happy to answer any questions, but there's really no more information I have to convey.
Any questions on the appeal? Thank you.
Thank you. With regards to the Chronos implementation update, as Mr. Kessel indicated, both myself and Deputy Administrator Carlson will be providing an update to you on this. I will be I will be outlining our implementation schedule as it appears right now, as well as trying to provide some, a little bit perspective about how the implementation has been going for the city. And thereafter, Deputy Administrator Carlson will be providing you a history of the costs that were associated with the Kronos implementation. So, to begin, just to provide you with a little bit of perspective on this implementation rollout, because it did begin, and the challenges also began when it was first purchased, but it goes back prior to my being here. I think from my perspective coming in, we tend to get a little bit spoiled with iPhones and iPads and the functionality at our fingertips. We download an app and input a little bit of personal information, and everything works wonderfully. However, this is very, the Kronos, I just wanted to highlight for the Commission and members of the audience, is a very different thing. It's not an app that we download and we input a little bit of data, and then it just does everything for us. It is a module that requires a substantial amount of, really hundreds of hours of collaboration between the vendor and the organization to exchange data and make sure everything is working properly. There's bank account information, social security number information, birth date, beneficiary designations, insurance preferences and selections. All of these things are going into Kronos. From my personal experience, I've been with employers that have had a online employee portal access to this information for the last, I want to say, the last time I didn't have it was possibly 2006. So, really 12 years. So, coming to the city and after 12 years of having that accessibility was definitely a different, was definitely different for me because I was used to being able to have an access as an employee, all of that information at my fingertips. So, from that perspective, this is very exciting, I think, for employees to be able to have that and not knowing, not having had that kind of access before and having to call up various people in city departments to check on the status. This will all be readily available for them. So, this is just wonderful. I also think that moving from one system to another can be challenging, but done quickly. But moving from no system to an online portal is a very large endeavor. And when this was initially taken on, and I can tell you, the people that are responsible for providing and collaborating with the vendor are primarily hourly employees that were tasked with hundreds of hours of work in addition to their normal full-time work duties, but were then told, or then asked, because we don't have budget for overtime for these individuals, but don't work overtime. So, here's more work. Fit it into your schedule and do it as you can. So, when we look at, from that perspective, about what they undertake, and I can tell you personally that members from the HR group and the accounting group meet many meetings a week, at least, I want to say there's, and Linda can correct me if I'm mistaken, but I believe there's three to five meetings that occur every week with the Kronos team every week of the implementation. And work has to be done in between those meetings, which take up at least an hour of time, as well as additional conference calls when issues arise. So, this has been a very large, very large undertaking. And like a, I want to say like, I don't know if Domino's might be the best example. If one thing gets moved, that pushes everything off. So, right now, our schedule is in looking at the, we're asking, again, these individuals who have been exchanging information with the vendor to provide training to our employees so that they, they're trained on Kronos before it goes live. And we're going to department-by-department training because there are variations between the timekeeping systems for each department. For example, Fire Department, Police Department, Public Works, all have substantial amount of shift work, which is a different system than, for example, City Hall employees. We have a pretty set schedule. So, we're coordinating, training with the departments. We anticipate and are asking these individuals to provide that training in certain weeks in May. We have to work around the payroll schedules because one of the trainers is, in fact, the person responsible for making sure everybody gets their paychecks on time, and that's a priority. So, that will be occurring, again, in May for individuals who miss those live trainings. We also have discussed and are making arrangements to record a, one of the sessions of the, not a live session, but make a recording of one of the training sessions so that can be provided to employees because we're not going to get everyone, there's going to be people who are on vacation, people who are sick, people who are just off schedule and will not be able to attend. So, we'll have a live training for them. Assuming training all is completed within the month of May, we will be using the month of June to test. We want to test for at least a couple payroll cycles. Again, the testing is running dual payrolls. So, the individuals will still be paid under the prior system with payroll manually administering and issuing the payments. However, at the same time, Kronos will be running. And we're going to verify that what is happening in the Kronos system is exactly the same as what we're used to on our payroll side. Assuming that that testing goes well and that no further issues arise, we will hopefully be going live in July. So, that is our goal date, our goal live date. But again, if anything gets pushed off because of an error which occurs, it usually will get pushed off another two weeks because of the payroll cycles that we have to, again, continue to administer. So, that is our proposed implementation schedule at this time. I'd be happy to answer any questions for you about that schedule. And if you don't have any questions for me, I would turn it over to Deputy Carlson, Deputy Administrator Carlson, for the costs that have been associated with the Kronos implementation.
Any questions for Attorney Martha?
I just have one. When did we start with this program?
In my PowerPoint here, it's stating where we started with as far as the budgets and how we came about it. So, I'm just going to kind of go down the list and how we did it. So, in fiscal year 15, there was budget money set aside for the program that was coming in. It took over a year to be able to come in and look at it and find out what we want, you know, for money of the contract that they were looking at. So, then it was approved in May of 16 that we would do the Kronos and through the contracts. Again, the HR module cost was $8,000, and the time clock costs were $6,884. But of that HR, the legal budget, it was split between Public Works because the fact is most of the time clocks and stuff were there. With that, we did start that, the program, and started getting the information ready for the HR side. This is just the benefit side. This is the HR portion of it. I came in in August of 16, found out about the new time system, was very excited about it, but like, City Attorney Martha, I also had 12, 15 years of electronic portal system where I had that. This was the first time I've, you know, in a long time that I've not had it. So, it was just very exciting that this was coming in and with the budget on there. So, each year, in the last three years, there has been budgeted money between HR and Finance that has been budgeted for these programs. If it wasn't used, it was encumbered to move forward to the next year. So, it wasn't that we were asking for more money at all the time. It was money that was moved so that we would have it. So, the total amount that was processed to purchase and get the payroll module, HR module, and to pay the yearly fees was $61,000, and that's up to date. Again, then in November, we arranged for the payroll module cost, which was very low compared to what the actual contract was. Staff and myself, we looked at the beginning of the contracts. I went through them, and staff brought forward that we've been paying maintenance fees for over a year or so on both modules, but we hadn't had both modules. So, with that, we went back to Kronos and negotiated a better price on our payroll module, and it went down from, they were proposing around $15,000 for the payroll module, and they took costs off of it, and we purchased it for actually $2,250. So, and then with the maintenance fees, they did stay the same on that. Now, as you can see down on the thing, the monthly maintenance fees, this is from October of 16 through September of 17, we were paying a monthly maintenance fee of $1,450 for a block of 200 employees. They charged by the employees that we have. So, during that time, this is where we worked mostly with the HR and phases, and we have quite a few phases with each module. Then, when we data download for the payroll, again, they charged for that data, as you can see. And then we, the maintenance fee went up a little bit because we also blocked up more employees because we figure there's about 237, but with seasonal and everybody, volunteers, the commissions and everybody, we blocked it. So, we blocked it up to about 250 up there. So, that, our maintenance fee went up a little bit. So, and from October of 17 through 12/17, with the data download of payroll, continuing with the HR phase of the information, as City Attorney Martha mentioned, of all that information that's going on, you pay a little bit more because of the maintenance and because it's more information, more things coming up. On that, we paid during that time, we paid $4,524. And then current, from January to the end of March, we're paying on 253 employees. That includes our test employees and those that we established so that we can make sure that everything is going to work. We have eight different categories that we test on because there's a lot of different shifts. There's a lot of different how people are getting paid. So, that we've paid so far is $5,058. That leaves a balance of our $61,000 that was encumbered and budgeted for in the last three years. That leaves $19,000. From April to the end of December, the, with the average of the maintenance costs that we have been using in '18, we will use about $17,500, so we will still be under that amount. Then we'll be able to establish a budgeted amount in the years to come of just our maintenance program, or if we add an additional module to it, then we will be coming forward to the Commissioners for that. I'd take any questions that you may have, and I have documentation if you do want to see. I have all the detailed documentation.
Any questions for Attorney Martha or Assistant City Administrator Carlson? There are no questions. Thank you. We'll move on to the Fire Department. Chief Seabock.
Thank you, Mayor Decker. Commissioners, this evening, we will be presenting the annual report of activities of the Dickinson Fire Department for 2017. This presentation will highlight the key points found in our written report that was provided to you, and the full report will also be posted on our website. In 2017, we had the honor of hosting the 133rd Annual North Dakota State Firefighters Convention. Considerable preparation and planning went into putting on this event with Mayor Decker, Police Chief Dossinger doing opening comments, along with Senator Heidi Heitkamp. Our keynote speaker on Friday was Mr. Gordon Graham, a nationally recognized speaker on risk management, and his presentation was funded through a North Dakota Workforce Safety and Insurance Grant that we obtained. Our convention speaker on Saturday was the Chair of the National Volunteer Fire Council, Kevin Quinn. Also in 2017, we, our department went through several significant changes. For one thing, we were evaluated by the Insurance Service Office to determine whether or not our public protection classification number was correct. And we actually increased, from one to 10, 10 being no protection and one being exemplary, we went from a four to a three, which was amazing. 50% of that score is based on the capabilities of the Fire Department. 50% of the remaining is based on the capabilities of the infrastructure of the city. So, all city departments share in us going down to that classification. Effective January 1 of 2018, any built structure within 1,000 feet of a fire hydrant can take advantage of that ISO Class III rating. We also went from three platoons, or from four platoons of full-time firefighters working 12-hour shifts to three platoons working 24-hour shifts. A significant change and a very beneficial change for our department. We were able to group manpower together in a better way, and the 24-hour shift schedule works much better to the responses expected of the department. Also, beginning in February of 2017, based on our restructuring, we were now able to reach out to the community in a medical response role that we were not ever able to do before. And we have very significant feedback from the Dickinson ambulance and from some citizens as to the positive impact of that in the community. Along with law enforcement, we experienced the opioid outbreak, and our first response trucks that we expect to run on medical calls now have Narcan onboard. Also in 2017, we were able to pay off the 75-foot ladder, the 505 aerial. It was a seven-year lease purchase that the City of Dickinson paid off in three years. Our department's structure, although we still, although we have significantly added full-time staff, the major portion of our department is still volunteer responders. We have done our best to refine our volunteer response to limit the impact on their primary jobs. As we rely heavily on the volunteers, however, to ensure adequate resources and manpower are available at an incident. Initial response is handled by a full-time on-duty crew. Our recruitment and retention efforts on the volunteer side of things are ongoing through word of mouth, social media, partnerships with the North Dakota Firefighters Association, with radio and television ads. We have three divisions that we recognize to help our departments with our mission of service to the community. The Fire Division, which has fire suppression, hazardous materials response, medical assistance, technical rescue and training, along with maintenance of apparatus and equipment, hydrant testing and coordination with city water utilities, is headed up by Assistant Fire Chief Deb Barrows, with Fire Engineer Hillary Hartman assisting her. She'll be presenting to you here in just a moment. Our Fire Prevention Bureau, Fire and Life Safety Inspections, Plan Reviews, Code Enforcement and Public Education, is headed up by Fire Marshal Mark Selly and assisted by Fire Inspector Todd O'Donnell. With that, our next slide gets into the Fire Division concerning training, and I would ask Assistant Fire Chief Deb Barrows to come up.
Good evening, President Decker and Commissioners. Deb Barrows, Assistant Chief of Support Services. So, as you see here, I'm going to be talking about our training activities for the year of 17. And of our total training hours, you see that number of 5,010. That's all-encompassing of all of our members, of which last year we ended with 45. That includes our regular trainings, our firefighter one, firefighter two certification programs, special operations, seminars and conferences. If you look at, I believe, that list that you have, we had a category of our medical training that exceeded over 700 hours. Part of that is, as Chief Seabock reported, we are now doing medical assist, so we needed to train our people. We had nine of our members, that's full-time and volunteer, that took part in an EMR course, Emergency Medical Responders. That is a huge commitment on their part. The majority of that class is continuing on as EMT training. One decided that at this time it wasn't feasible for his schedule. So, that's pretty amazing when you think about that. We also had firefighter operations that had over 700 hours of training, which is important because that's our main job, right? Operating of all of that equipment. We also include in that 5,000 hours our full-time staff that needs to have 18 hours annually of a facility training, which would be at our training site, and 16 hours monthly of company training, and that's two firefighters or more, including volunteer and full-time. And that is recommended and expected And that is recommended and expected to be completed to meet that Class III ISO rating. So that is something that we are expecting our people to, to complete in a year. We also conduct training on an ongoing basis. But these are two certification programs I wanted to mention today. And one of them is our firefighter one certification, that is a requirement of our department to be completed by anybody joining within two years. And we had three of our firefighters complete that, Zach King, Jared Rody and Jose Serrato. Our firefighter two certification is also available, but not required. And as you see here, we had three of our full-time staff complete that in seventeen. Gypsy Faute, Stephen Lawson and Kyle McIntosh. A little special tidbit, I guess you wanna call on this certification is they went ahead and got pro-board certified, which is an additional written test and an additional skill-based test to meet that pro-board certification. All of our firefighter one and two certifications require an online coursework module and skill-based training, where they have job performance reviews that need to be completed. They also take a written and practical test of a certain score that must be achieved to receive that certification. That's offered annually. And one of the big topics is, of course, taking care of ourselves, taking care of our own so we can take care of the citizens of the, of the community. This is a huge concern in the fire service nationwide on the risk of cancer and developing cancer amongst firefighters. And it's due to our job. We're exposed to byproducts of fire, our synthetics, our petroleum-based products. So research has shown that we do have a higher risk of developing certain types of cancers. So how do we combat that? How do we prevent that to keep our people from being more exposed than they already are? So we do that by bringing awareness to our people, implementing changes in our department procedures that help prevent those additional risks. We can do that on the fire ground, and we can do that in the station when we come back. And we do that through educating, educating our people, developing some decon procedures, cleaning our gear before we leave the scene, making sure we're wiping off our skin with wipes that we have provided on our engines, and early detection, and that's by doing physicals. We currently provide physicals on a year-of-service basis for our full-time staff. Our volunteers are not included in that. It's part of a presumptive law that's been established. Our goal is to provide annual physicals for everyone as we're all exposed to those same Okay, now we're gonna move into the fire incidents. We had six hundred and forty-nine calls for service in seventeen with no casualties or exposures by our personnel on any of those calls. They are both fire emergencies and non-fire emergencies. Our highest activity for last year was in July, and that was due to the burn ban that we had in effect last year. Lot of burn pits, a lot of unauthorized burning that took place during that month, which is kind of a common month for picnics and outdoor barbecues. So we had a total of seventy-six calls of fire calls, actual calls. And here we have a new, a new calculation that we can do with our update of our fire module. That's called Fire Programs, where we enter in all these incidents and give us reports at the end of the year. And so our estimated dollar loss was five hundred and eighty thousand nine hundred and thirty. And that's on actual fires that we've had throughout the year. And then we can calculate an estimated fire dollar loss saved. So what that is, is the difference between the assessed property value and the estimated dollar loss. And we get that property assessment through our City Assessor page. That's how we get that information. It's an estimated fire dollar loss because we don't always get the actual loss figure from that insurance company. And here you have how we break down our fire calls. We had seventy-six. Ten of those were building fires, and the majority, forty-eight, were cooking fires. So we discuss that with our fire marshal, and then we try to do some public education to prevent those type of calls. You see that we had medical a hundred and fifteen. And even with that number, because that's some, a new service being provided, we were still up in our fire calls from two thousand and fourteen. So we are getting a little busier. Hazardous conditions with no fires, that would be a carbon monoxide call, something of that nature. Service calls, good intent calls, seventy-nine. False alarm, false calls, one sixty-eight. It seems like a lot, but we have a lot of systems in our buildings now with the new growth. And we can split those into two groups. The, the false alarms that activated due to a malfunction and a false alarm call due to some proper stimuli that activated that alarm, like dust, where people were doing construction work and it actually activated because something got into the detector. And three citizen complaints. One of those being an ice chunk on a awning of a building. Kind of concerned that if that fell onto someone, it could do some damage, so the crews went over and knocked it down. And that's all I have. So Fire Marshal Selly is next. Thank you.
Mr. President, Commissioners, Mark Selly, Fire Marshal. Just gonna present to you a little bit on the Fire Prevention Bureau. It is made up of myself, Inspector O'Donnell and the full-time firefighters. We are responsible for doing inspections, fire prevention, fire education, things of that nature. And this is what this is gonna do entail. In two thousand and seventeen, we upgraded our program, which was mentioned as Fire Programs, to the same program, but it's a web-based program called Wildfire. Now, this is a totally different base, so it was a totally different data transfer. In that transfer, it was a lot more advanced, so it took us a long time to get the data transferred and get the right things in the correct places. And we also reorganized the locations of the businesses to what you see here as tier levels to help reduce the risk to higher priorities. So our highest level, of course, is gonna be our assembly areas, our restaurants and our high-hazard areas, such as chemical storage and things like that. So we adjusted that to try to help make sure that we get the contact to all the higher priorities and try to get contact to everybody in the future. And we will be making more changes than two thousand and eighteen. The inspections that were conducted, as you can see on this, this chart, the majority of them were the routines and follow-ups, and then the rest were the construction. And if there, it's all in your, in your pamphlet that was given to you. If you have any questions on that, you can, you can ask me then. In Fire Prevention Bureau, as far as our education, we saw, or went to a hundred and ninety-nine different public education events, whether that's demonstrations, public education, or anything in that nature. One of the big items that we do every year is the two thousand and seventeen, we did the Fire Prevention Week, which is in October. We saw over sixteen hundred students in seventy-five different classrooms. And giving them the fire prevention message to help prevent, you know, prevent these fires from happening, to decrease our dollar loss to our community. Hopefully, that, that message that we give to them during the school day, it will take it home and, and do it with their parents and their, and their other family members and reduce that risk. And that is the end of our presentation, so if you have any questions for any of us, feel free to ask.
Any questions for the fire staff? Seeing none? Thank you very much. We have nothing from the Police Department. We'll move on to Engineering. Mr. Kubis, we have an agreement?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner President Decker and Commissioners. The first item we have is a cost participation and maintenance agreement from the DOT for our upcoming two thousand and eighteen Dickinson Seal Coat project. Just a little history, I know we've talked about the project in past meetings. These are seven miles of street in Dickinson that we've recently paved, and I would say by recently, in the last one to four years, these streets have been paved mostly with GPT dollars. So now we're utilizing some of our, our DOT federal dollars and sales tax to seal these streets up. As is typical with DOT projects, there's an eighty, roughly eighty percent, it's a little better than that, eighty point nine-three percent cost share, with the feds committing up to a maximum of five hundred and forty-two thousand two hundred and thirty-one dollars. Our local match will come from the, the one percent sales tax. Again, that's typical to our street projects, it's the fifty percent of the one percent sales tax. And as a reminder, if you could, make that a part of your motion, the DOT has a separate form now that they will ask to fill out and, and state that local match source. So this project is in total estimated right now at six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So it gives us an estimated city share of around a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. These are construction costs. The project will be bid at the DOT bid letting in May. City staff has reviewed the agreement and would recommend approval. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Any questions for Mr. Kubis? The exact language that you need on the motion?
It's in the, the packet, but it's really just a motion to approve the cost participation and maintenance agreement with the source of the local funds coming from the one percent sales tax.
So moved.
A second.
Will that suffice, Mrs.? Any other discussion or questions for Mr. Kubis? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustam?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair was aye. The Seal Coat Agreement passed. Mr. Kubis, MDU line relocation?
Thank you. Disregard this slide, this was a late addition, so B got bumped, and this is the new six B. But it's an item that's come before you of some MDU line relocation costs. If you remember, there was a fifty-five thousand dollar agreement we had. MDU far exceeded that agreement. After the, after the agreement, that invoice or payment of that invoice was tabled. And I've had subsequent conversations with MDU representatives. They've shared with me that, you know, they really had a bad estimate, that they far exceeded the estimate of fifty-five thousand dollars and have already taken off a considerable amount of money. And he shared that detail with me. So what I shared with him was that one of the, the main concerns that the commission stated and voiced to the MDU rep at that meeting was that there was an engineering change order for Kildare Mountain Manufacturing, design of their parking lot, the layout of their parking lot. And that was in the amount of eighty-four hundred and seventy dollars. So he said, you know, would you remove that eighty-four hundred and seventy dollars? They've countered with a reduction of half of that amount, the forty-two, sorry, I gotta look this up here, the forty-two hundred and thirty-five dollars, which would leave a remaining balance on that invoice they paid of seventy-two thousand two hundred dollars and seventy-three cents. I feel this, this is pretty fair. Again, it's, it's more than what we had in our agreement, but understanding what they went through and the, and the cost that they've already deducted from the invoice, which they, they didn't publicly share at the last meeting, I, I would recommend approval of payment of the invoice minus the, the amount of forty-two thirty-five, so a remaining balance of that seventy-two thousand two hundred and seventy-three cents.
Any questions for Mr. Kubis?
So what was the budgeted amount for, you said fifty-five?
Fifty-five.
And then so we're, they're changing it from seventy-six to roughly seventy-two?
Seventy-six forward to seventy-two, two.
Still seventy thousand. We're still twenty-seven thousand over.
I know, I just, I mean, that's like, it's like twenty-five percent. It's a lot. It's actually fifty percent. It was a fifty percent overrun. I mean, can they, did they explain how their estimate was that bad? I mean, I mean, I just look at it from my point of view. If I can give you a bid to build you a house for two hundred and fifty thousand, I mean, I could understand it was ten percent over something, but fifty percent?
Commissioner Frederick, if I may, they, they have shared with me, not in detail the reasons of, but the actual costs that were incurred and, and the dollars that were, quote-unquote, you know, eaten by, by MDU. They didn't care to make that public. I do, I do have it. They've, they've asked that, that remain confidential, but, so they have, I think, in good faith, taken, taken their lumps on this one. Of course, it's still over what our agreement stated was fifty-five thousand. Beyond that, I, I guess I can't make any more explanations for it, other than they said, you know, it, it was really a bad estimate on their, on their part in the front end.
And just for reference, the conversation, there was a change to the original plan, right? Because the parking entrance, the, or the lot entrance had to be changed because of loading?
I'm not exactly sure what the change of, with the parking lot was, but it, they had entrances in their parking lot, whether it was for the unloading or just employee vehicles. It didn't allow the poles to be positioned where MDU had originally planned for those poles to be moved.
I remember, it was my understanding, something with their loading dock, there was a pole right in the way or something.
So they had to change the plans that we had originally budgeted for, to accommodate for the lack of communication possibly between MDU and KMM?
Okay, if we agreed to pay this, then where does the money come from? I mean, we obviously didn't budget for this, did we? Overrun?
No, well, we hadn't, what we had initially budgeted this for, we put it, we showed it as a capital improvement project. We weren't paying for the street, but we had agreed to pay for this line move. And the fifty-five thousand was budgeted to come from the GPT, because this was growth in Dickinson. So that's where the, the money was budgeted to come from.
Mrs. Carlson, the twenty-seven thousand would come out of the GPT?
Yes, that's where I would recommend that to be paid out of.
And we have enough to cover it?
Yes, we do.
I think at this point, the, the one thing that we, we need to, I guess, reiterate with anybody that continues to do business with us is, we need better updates, especially, to me, this is, was, should have been a change order that should have came to us immediately.
Not after it was done?
Right, after it's done and, so that we can better accommodate the, the finances, I would say, so.
And I, I think it's important to note, too, that MDU has been willing to work with us on this, and, you know, I, I understand they're eating a cost, too. I guess it's difficult for us to understand how much, since they do wanna hold that, that in private, which, which I understand as well, but it's just very hard to understand the situation, not knowing all the details.
You know, was Kildare Mountains involved in this at all? I mean, did, did they pay any of this?
Not, not to my knowledge, Commissioner Frederick. Our agreement with Kildare Mountain, in, in general terms, I'm paraphrasing this, we, we did have a development agreement with them as they, they did a replat and, and their site plan for their expansion, was that they would be responsible for the, the infrastructure, which was their portion of Eighteenth Avenue East, and that the city would be responsible for the line utility, the line relocation costs.
If I, if I may also offer, Mr. President, Members of the Commission, Mr. Kubis and I have discussed the language of the agreement and ways that in the future, additional wording can create a stronger agreement that would hopefully prevent such, these types of miscommunications and events from occurring.
Thank you for the, you know, keep an eye on these contracts, because I think we have to continue to update some of the wording. I guess, move things along. If there's no more questions or comments. If there's no more questions or comments, I don't think we can table this for any longer. We need to pay the bill, or not pay the bill, one of the two.
I move we deny payment. Send it back to renegotiation involves all three entities.
Second.
We have a motion to deny payment and a second. Any further discussion?
I do have a question, yes. So, Ms. Bartholomew, since we do have that negotiated agreement with Kildare Mountain Manufacturing, are... I mean, is it fair to ask them to be seated at the table in terms of negotiating this invoice?
The... I apologize for this in advance. I'm going to be somewhat vague in my comment. The only reason is that you... This particular issue qualifies for attorney consultation in executive session, where I can provide an analysis of legal strengths and weaknesses of the city's position with regards to options for moving forward. But I believe it would be appropriate to discuss it in executive session. With that being said, which is an option for you at all times, a very short, simple answer to the question is, is it fair? Yes.
It's more fair for us to ask them to participate than just sending us a bill and not asking us at all.
Right. I just feel they're backing us into a corner here. I mean, I want to keep our relationship good with MDU, but, I mean...
Well, we have a motion to deny and a second, so... And with the suggestion, this goes into a renegotiation, so... Hearing no further comments or questions for staff, we'll go ahead and vote on the motion to deny. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Altman's?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion to deny payment and to renegotiate passed. We'll move on to Mr. Kubis, DOT bridge inspection.
So the next couple items are just reports. We have had this, it was a couple years ago now. The DOT inspects all of our bridges that are, one, vehicular bridges, and two, that are over 20 feet long. So if you remember, a couple meetings ago, they actually just changed this now, where they're going to inspect these every three years. So you won't get this report now for another three years, but long story short, our bridges are in very good shape. I'll just reread, I guess, for the general public, what I had put in my memo. I think there are some highlights to touch on. So these bridge inspection reports have great amounts of information. Some of it is pretty irrelevant to anybody but a bridge engineer. So I'll put myself in that list, too, but they do have one thing that's important, and it's an overall sufficiency rating. And generally, above 50, the bridge is considered sufficient. Below 50, it would be insufficient. We have our lowest rated structure at 82.3, so very good condition. And that'd be the Hart River Bridge on State Avenue. Our highest rated structure is a 99.8, and that's the reinforced concrete box culvert on State Avenue near the Public Safety Center. Another item is the year that these structures were built. So our oldest bridges in Dickinson are on the Hart River on State Avenue. That bridge was built in '86, and the Hart River Bridge on 6th Avenue Southeast was built in '96. Our newest structures are the concrete box culvert by the Public Safety Center, and then, of course, the State Avenue Railroad Bridge. They were just built in the last couple of years. Most of our structures, however, though, are reinforced concrete box culverts that kind of line the city along the Dickinson drainage ditch. And those bridges have been built from 1952 to 1982, with all of them having ratings over a 90. So overall, I would give this a general report card of an A. Are there any questions on the bridge ratings and the bridge inventory?
Any questions, comments? The one thing, the bridge on 22 over the heart, that's not ours?
It's not ours. That's the DOT's. So the interstate bridge is another bridge that they would inspect and rate, but it's on their system, so... One thing to note, you know, there are a couple other bridges in town that don't get rated, and that would be our pedestrian bridge over the Hart River by Eagles Park and the Grass Softball Complex. Again, a fairly recent bridge built in the '90s, I believe. And then the railroad bridge on Highway 22, because it doesn't carry vehicular traffic, I'm sure the railroad does inspections on that, but we don't see that data, so... The last item that I have, I guess I left it mysterious because my memo is non-existent, but it's an update on the State Water Commission. They ask us to send to them projects that we are looking at doing in the next, you know, in the near future. And so we send these to them every year. Many times, we've gotten funding for those projects. On these particular forms, they're not asking for funding right now. They just want to see what's out there, and they put together a statewide report of, here's the water needs in North Dakota. So the projects we sent to them were, number one, a system-wide improvement, which includes a 12-inch water main from the water tower on Water Tower Hill, east and west from there. It's a pretty large project. This was identified in our water utility master plan that we did in 2015. The other two projects, we had these on our list with the state for quite a while. It was a tank on the north and south sides of town, so two separate projects. As growth was really pushing that way, we had big developments proposed down south. We had big developments that are in place up north. We got these projects on the list, but right now, we're kind of servicing those areas with booster stations. Both, we have one down by the river on the south side by 6th Avenue Southeast, and then north on State Avenue. And so in the short term, as developments slow down and buildings slow down, we'll be able to service those areas for the foreseeable future with those booster stations. But we do keep the tanks on the list because we know how fast things can ramp up, and then we don't want to scramble and have the State Water Commission surprised when we add those projects to our list. But we do have them out. They kind of go by the biennium, so we have it out in the third biennium from right now. A fourth project that we'd included with this was just an update to our water utility master plan. We've built a lot of things since that was completed, and then there's a lot of assumptions we made that probably aren't valid assumptions anymore. So it might be time to look at an update to that water utility master plan. The one we did was actually funded by the State Water Commission in part back in 2015. That concludes my reports. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Kubis? Thank you. We're on to public works. Mr. Zeroff?
Good evening, President Decker and commissioners.
It is evening.
Good night.
I just, before, we're going to do a quick solid waste end report and water reclamation end report, I wanted to give a quick update of our DEMCON tour. If you remember, we were looking at different material recovery facilities, and the one that we figured out looked the best was DEMCON out of Shakopee, Minnesota. I wish a couple of you could have attended the tour with us. It was very enlightening. So this would... DEMCON companies at the MRF would take our single stream recycling and separate it into the different things to recycle. And one of the things they had there, and you can see in the video, is the quality. They spent a lot of money on quality, and they are investing a lot more on different things in their plant to make sure it meets or exceeds the quality. And that's the key nut right now, even with China and those other things, is the quality of your recycling material. I think they'll show it here, but one of the interesting things we're going to put in, six more, I believe it is, six more of the optic scanners, which, as it comes in the conveyor belt, it sees that and little puffs of air blow that material out into a different basket. So they have multiple people doing the separating now, which is really hard work. Another thing that was part of the tour that I thought was real exciting, and I think I brought it up at executive, we, at lunch, we went to a curling center for lunch, so we could have lunch and view them practicing curling. I'd never seen such a facility before. This company, DEMCON, also provides many educational opportunities, including a mobile learning center that they set up with virtual reality. And these kind of services are available with DEMCON, and those are some of the things we want to look at when we negotiate an agreement with them and enter into a contract. So I won't, I guess, talk anymore about that. If you have any more questions after the video, you can sure ask me. It's a short hour video, so we can... If you want to go ahead, there we go.
All right. How many of you recycle at home? You ever wonder what happens to the stuff you recycle? Years ago, almost everything we threw away ended up right here in the landfill. Whoa! Today, thanks to recycling, we're keeping more and more of this stuff out of the landfill and turning it back into something useful instead. So how many of you use one of these at home or at school? With single stream recycling, you can fill this up with all of your recyclables. And here at DEMCON's Materials Recovery Facility, we'll sort through it and figure out what to do with everything. It's a big job, but with the help of some special equipment, we can process over 20 tons of recyclables every hour. You want to see how we do it?
Yeah!
Not everything you throw away can be recycled. Some materials are just really hard to turn back into new products. Luckily, about 75% of the stuff we throw away can be recycled. Most of these recyclables fall into one of four categories: fibers, metals, plastics, and glass. Let's take a journey through our recycling facility and find out how DEMCON deals with each type of material. Fibers is what we call things made from paper and cardboard. Everything from juice boxes to magazines to grocery bags, because they're all made up of tiny plant fibers. See? This is a great recyclable material, because we can take old paper and cardboard and turn it into new paper and cardboard again and again. The recovery process for recyclables starts here on the tipping floor, where trucks drop off mixed recyclables for us to process. These recyclables come from all over the Twin Cities area and beyond. All day long, our loaders scoop up the recyclables into our recovery system, and they're on their way to a new life. When it comes to separating cardboard out from the rest of the waste, the old corrugated cardboard screen helps us get the job done fast. This machine is filled with a bed of spinning discs that carries cardboard across while letting other kinds of recyclables fall through. Hey, look, there goes our little red box. Our old newsprint screen uses spinning rubber stars that separate a different kind of fiber from the waste stream. Newsprint! This is an important type of fiber that can be turned into brand-new magazines and newspapers. Sometimes our machines get a little help from sharp-eyed workers who sort through the recyclables as they flow by on a conveyor. Here in the fiber cabin, we make sure that all the different kinds of fibers end up in the right place, like our little friend here. Hey, where'd you go? The fiber baler squeezes different kinds of fiber into bales and binds them up tight with wire. These bales can be transported to a paper mill, where they'll be turned into brand-new paper and cardboard. See you later, fiber! Metal is used to make all kinds of things, from bicycles to bridges. The metal we collect here at DEMCON is very valuable, because it can be melted down and recycled into useful new products. Our powerful magnetic separator ribs steel cans and other metal recyclables right out of the stream. That's one powerful magnet. Did you know that some metals aren't magnetic? Aluminum, for example. For things like cans that you can't grab with a magnet, DEMCON uses this high-tech machine called the Eddy Current separator. It creates a powerful electromagnetic field that causes aluminum to jump right out of the waste. Pretty cool, huh? Whee! The container baler compresses the sorted metal into bales that can be stacked for easy storage. These bales can be melted down and turned into shiny new products by manufacturers all over the world. Just don't try to move one by yourself. This bale of aluminum cans weighs more than 1,000 pounds! Oh, over here! I think we found it. Gee! Did you know Americans use 2.5 million plastic bottles every hour? That's why it's so important to make sure that we're recycling as much of this plastic as possible. Not all plastic is the same, though, so to make sure that it can be recovered properly, we need to do some extra sorting. Fortunately, DEMCON has a piece of amazing equipment that makes this process a lot easier. This is the optical sorter. Using an infrared camera connected to a superfast computer, it's able to figure out what kind of plastic container is passing by and blast it onto a pepper conveyor with a jet of air. It's so fast, it can sort up to six tons of plastic bottles every hour! That's a lot better than letting it sit around in a landfill. Oh, there it is! Right in there! Look at that! Glass objects from all around us...
Glass is one thing we're not going to accept right now.
Because glass can be melted down and reused over and over again without losing any quality. This keeps glass out of the landfill and saves a lot of energy. You hear that? That's the sound of our glass breaker screen smashing up the jars, bottles, and other glass containers that end up inside of it. Uh-oh! We drop the glass fragments into this big bay. From here, it'll be sent to another facility that uses special equipment to separate the pieces by color and size, so they can be melted down and turned into new glass. And the process starts all over again. To make the most of this great facility, it's important for you to know what can and can't be recycled here. Some items can't be processed at our facility, but there might be other ways to reuse or recycle them. Our website lists all the rules for what can and can't be processed here at DEMCON, and ways that you can help us recycle more efficiently. The things we throw away used to be considered worthless, but today, high-tech recycling facilities like DEMCON Materials Recovery are turning trash into treasure. Companies of all types love buying high-quality metals, fibers, plastics, and glass that we produce right here in the Twin Cities. It's pretty amazing how many things we can recycle here, but there's still a lot of trash that gets thrown away. Are you ready to do your part to help us recycle as much as possible?
Yeah!
Who knows? Maybe one of you will invent a new way to recycle and help us make the world a greener place.
So that's just one of the videos they have, and they really do a good job of putting the educational activities together. I think, once we get going in single stream, it would be worth, maybe we can take a van down later, and I would, I think some commissioners would love to see their facility. Another place we looked at was kind of the end product. They make the plastic furniture, outdoor furniture. It's real composite, really heavyset. We went to a place near there that did that, so they take the plastic pellets and make this furniture last forever. Another place we looked at was the Liberty Paper Plant in Becker, Minnesota. They take the cardboard and actually then make the paper of the cardboard boxes again, and their only material they use is recycled cardboard. And Liberty Paper is a partner with DEMCON, so we can store our cardboard and take it directly to the Liberty Plant, and they're always looking for high-quality material, and I think that would benefit us, too, and maybe get more dollars for the cardboard facility. That's all I have. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Zeroff?
And like I said, we'll be probably negotiating an agreement and bringing that to the commission soon with DEMCON, so thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Very informative.
Very informative. Mr. Proust?
Good evening, Mr. President, Commissioners. Aaron Proust, Solid Waste Manager, here to present the 2017 year-end report for solid waste. As we said many times over and over, we are a regional facility. We service all of southwest North Dakota, which includes the service area as shown on the map. It's 26 communities and rural areas, including the city of Dickinson. Total incoming tonnages for 2017, where everything is taken in by weight, for this year was 88,342 tons. It was a 23% increase from 2016. This was the first year where we were able to weigh all materials coming into our facilities. That's why you'll see a significant change from 2015, 16, where it was pretty consistent. And in latter part of 2016 is when we started weighing everything. 2017, we had a full year. Focusing on the top three items that come into our landfill operation, household was just over 39,000 tons. Construction materials, a little over 7,000 tons, and inert waste at just about 4,000 tons. On a five-year comparison for construction demolition material, which includes asphalt shingles inert and construction material, we were slightly above 2016 by 7%, but we are significantly decreased from five years ago when we were experiencing the boom. The slight increase in 2017 was due to a house demolition site project where the parking lot was created just north of City Hall. Quite a few tons came out of that. Looking at the household tonnages, we ended the year at just over 39,000 tons, which was a 4% decrease from 2016, but still slightly higher than five years ago before the oil boom had hit us. Focusing on the household materials, as I said earlier, we are a regional landfill. About 50% of our materials, 51% of our materials actually comes from outside of our region, and 49% from in-city. Which isn't even... Go ahead.
Is that typical of other regional landfills as well, that percentage range?
Depending on city size is what drives a lot of it. In our case, obviously, our regional area is significantly larger than our city. So, as I said, about 50% of our landfill is actually being used by our region. Answered?
Yes.
Looking at residential stops per month, this is the total number of stops that we do on our residential trucks. Most of those are done by side-load collection trucks. Focusing every six months, so June and December, we are still experiencing a slight growth since the oil boom. So, as you can look at the scale, you can see a slight progression. We're still experiencing that in the months of June and December of 2017. Same goes with the commercial side, which is mostly done by our front-load trucks. This is the number of stops that they pick up per month. Does not include the unique billing account, or unique accounts, which are like our schools, the college, anywhere where there's multiple containers or extra numerous pickups of those containers and we don't have a service account for. So, we have to manually edit those accounts. There, I believe, is about 32 unique accounts that aren't included in here. But you'll see a significant, or a slight increase in 2017, and a lot of that is due to overfull containers, which are causing wind blow and debris in our community. We've been having some time now to where we can focus on those accounts and get them to do additional collection or pickups, or even increase their container size or put in another container. As far as recycling operations go, we're still, aside from looking at the single-stream recycling, which Gary had just presented to you, we are doing our cardboard, paper, waste oil, appliances, concrete, asphalt, yard waste, tires, and trees. Those numbers are pretty consistent with 2016. There wasn't any significant changes to point out.
Mr. Proust? And we are discontinuing the waste oil? Or just in the recyclable area?
I will touch base on that in just a minute.
Okay.
Focusing on the yard waste materials of the 1,400 tons that were collected, 56% of those tons were actually contaminated and went into our landfill. They weren't recycled. Only 44% were actually recycled. Going back to what Mistrustum had just said, we are experiencing a lot of contamination on our recycling sites. One of the changes that we just recently had last week, that hit just about 10,000 Facebook posts or views, was a waste oil collection site. The one that's located on 10th Avenue East. And a lot of people were focusing on the containers that were piled up around the waste oil site. The problem was what was inside the barrel. There was a gluey substance that contaminated our waste hauler's load, oil waste hauler's load. He ended up going back to Jamestown with about a half a truckload of oil and dumped that, treated it all as contaminated material, come back, finish his route in Dickinson, and then proceed further towards Kildare with his truck. So, he ended up doing a lot of backtracking because of one mistake that was made here in Dickinson. That is the reason we closed that 10th Avenue East location. There still are two other locations that you can dump oil at. It's West Broadway and over on 13, or right off of State's Avenue by the college, and then the baler building during open hours. If the problem does continue, we are going to continue looking at closing those sites down, but we have some other parameters that I will discuss here in a minute. Go ahead.
I was just going to make a comment and say that, I would say that the community seemed to really overwhelmingly support the decision and understood that this was not, you know, done in retribution. It was more, this can't happen any longer. I mean, from a community perspective, they seemed very supportive, that they understood the severity of these actions and why the city has to make hard decisions like this when they're trying to provide a service.
We have been monitoring that same problem, that location site, for the last year on that same situation. We have caught a few people that were abusing it, but it's just got to the point of where we're devoting so much time trying to monitor and figure it out. So, one of the new things that we're going to add here in 2018 is we actually have cameras that are, have arrived, and we are going to start monitoring all of our recycling sites, especially the ones where we're noticing significant issues and problems, and working with the Dickinson Police Department on issuing fines that will be processed through the courts. As you can see on the pictures, the first picture is a container that's completely overloaded by one of our apartment complexes. That's one of the issues that we've been tackling since the boom has slowed down. Picture in the middle is a vehicle that's parked in front of a container. A lot of our complaints that come in is the can was missed. A lot of the drivers are reporting back to us that there's a vehicle parked in front, so we've been documenting license plates and such, so that we can report back when those calls come in. And then the third picture, or the far right, is actually a picture that came off of our 10th Avenue East site. Somebody took a rock and concrete and dumped it into the fill station portion of the barrel. Again, contaminated the whole entire load that the oil collector was trying to pick up. So, what's coming in the future are those cameras, some fines, and then also some GPS, AVL tracking software in the trucks, so we can better monitor all of our locations and stops. One of our accomplishments in 2017 was the addition of the Dickinson Works mobile app, which is a free download. Highly recommend it for all residents to get. With our recent holidays that took place, there was a lot of missed containers, and a lot of direction has been pointed towards this app. You can see your trash collection schedule, receive reminders about when your collection day will be, learn if materials can be recycled, and get alerts about any water or street removal, or snow removal situations that we're having. Dickinson Works is also available online by going to our website, Dickinsongov.com. Enter in your address, and you can view your collection schedule. If you click the little green tab, it will be on the left side, you can get a reminder, and you could set that up at your convenience if you want to be notified one day prior to your garbage collection route, or a week prior. It's up to you. You can set that reminder up. Another addition to the Dickinson Works is the Waste Wizard. If you have any questions about how to get rid of or dispose of any type of material, you can type it into our Waste Wizard. It'll direct you to our sites. It'll also give you Google Maps to get it to that location. So, if you're not familiar with our community, you can follow the Google Maps, and it'll get you to where you need to get to. How we do some of our tracking internally is through the OpWorks program. It's called Service Requests. So, if we have any changes that are coming through on the solid waste side, we'll enter them in as Service Request, and we'll notify our other operators of the change. And this is tracking for all changes, concerns, or requests that come through. Looks similar to that on our side. Missing a slide. But when it's closed, at the very bottom, we can add some comments to it, and then we can turn around and review that at any given point if we have problems or if another question would come up at a latter point. And some upcoming plans and goals for 2018 is to hire a full-time recycling coordinator. We're working on route restructuring and elimination of the rear-load routes. Implementation of a single-stream recycling program for residential areas. There are two grants that are pending right now for recycling, education, and marketing. And then, continue with the acquisition of the landfill property for future development. And we are now through the investigation stages of the property to the north of the landfill. We're in the process of reviewing the findings and coming up with a decision. With that, do you have any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Proust? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the WRF Annual Report, Facility Manager Stack.
Yes, good evening, President Decker, Commissioners. I think I'm the last one on the list. Anyway, I am going to present, or first of all, I'm Greg Stack. I'm the Water Reclamation Facility Manager, for those of you that don't know me. I am going to present the 2017 Water Reclamation Facility Report. First of all, facility description, for those of you that aren't familiar with the facility. It was commissioned, constructed and commissioned in November 2014. Basically, a $30 million facility, beautiful facility, by the way. It implements a biological nutrient removal system, which removes both nitrogen and phosphorus biologically from the water, from the incoming sewage that comes into the system. It's one of two that I'm aware of in North Dakota. I am not aware of anything in the upper Midwest that does have biological nutrient removal. It is a IFAS treatment system. It's, IFAS is for, or is a Integrated Fixed Film Activated Sludge System, which I think is a trademarked system developed by the manufacturer Kruger. We also implement aerobic digestion to stabilize sludge before it's actually land-applied. And then also, two, one other facet of our facility that we'll probably get into, you've probably heard about, is the reuse water distribution system, which does provide us with some very interesting revenue year after year. Okay. Treatment facts for 2017. We sent 417 million gallons of treated effluent to the Hart River. However, we also sent 203 million gallons of treated effluent to reuse and reuse facilities. DPR, Tesoro, Andeavor, next year, that'll just be Andeavor, so we went through kind of three naming changes there. And MBI, where they also took our treated effluent, sent that out to fracking facilities out in just north of Bellfield, I believe. Also, we produced 519 metric tons of biosolids, which were all land-applied on city-owned land adjacent to our facility. And then, in 2017, we had a total reuse water value. This is what we invoiced out. This is what came in, and this is all gross numbers, of $1,087,059, which was all part of that 203 million gallons of treated effluent going to reuse facilities. In comparison, the year before, 2016, we had about 515 million gallons of treated effluent going to the Hart River. So consequently, we only had about 102 million gallons that went to reuse. So, we increased that amount significantly. We doubled the amount going to reuse last year. Also, too, just as comparative number, 2016, we land-applied 513 metric tons of biosolids, basically the same, maybe just a little bit more in 2017. It's all a component of what's coming into the system, how much we're treating. You can almost tie it to population as well. I would say that if you looked at these numbers, what's coming in, our population is stable or increasing slowly. Also, two other things that I didn't have on my slide, I should have put them on there, but in 2017, we did start, the Water Reclamation Facility started an asset management program using OpWorks. The implementation was started in July of 2017. We've been using it ever since to develop both preventative maintenance work orders as well as reactive work orders, equipment breaking down, then keeping track of how many hours, all the costs associated with it. A true asset management system. One other thing that we did as a facility, we did join an organization called the Water Reuse Association in August of 2017. Attended the National Convention down in Phoenix. We, Public Works Director Zurov and myself, we toured several reuse facilities down there in the Phoenix area. Talked to a number of people. I came from, I spent some time down in Arizona for a while. Quite a few people that I know that we toured, I was acquainted with, and we kind of talked about old things. But really getting together, kind of a, kind of a, an opportunity for us to go ahead and show that, you know, we have a purpose also with reusing the water, reusing something that would normally go into the river. Okay, outlook for 2018. Okay, reuse, reuse numbers that we have. We have a contract with ND Energy guaranteed for 15 million gallons. We're hoping there's going to be more than just the 15 million, but the contract will go up to 400 million gallons. If we do get up to that 400 million gallons, we'll be well north of $2 million gross for 2018. Yet to be seen, but if I'm not mistaken, we're talking about them starting up in around May 1st. Reuse for Andeavor, about 65 million gallons, about the same as what it was the past couple of years. It's going to be about the same. Total flow, we're projecting for the Water Reclamation Facility, 670 million gallons, that's total flow. I think last year, we projected about 650. Actual was about 620. And then, we're anticipating about the same, 500 metric tons of biosolids land-applied to land adjacent to the facility. Other things on the outlook for 2018, we started design for a septic hauler dump station. That's another component of revenue that we're looking at. We started taking septic hauling from a new vendor that is out of Watford City. They've been pretty consistent since October. They're bringing in revenue of approximately $5,000 a month. Basically, they're hauling from a man camp just north of the county line on 2017. Basically, they're hauling from a man camp just north of the county line on 22. We've also, as we bring extra septic into our treatment facility, there was a need to incorporate a manifest system. We want to know where it is being produced. We want to know who's hauling it, and then the state likes to see where it's ultimately disposed of. We put that together. State really likes it, something that we can keep track of all waste coming into the Water Reclamation Facility. We have the construction of a reuse effluent piping system so we can divert that to our Lagoon Number Four. That was budgeted at $250,000. I think we're very close. As soon as we get all the documentation to go ahead and have a notice to proceed. I think we're looking at the end of November as the anticipated completion date. We're looking at also other potential wholesale customers in the system that would also bring us additional revenue for our reuse water, also increasing that number of 203 million, hopefully higher. And also, we're looking at some code changes for other potential waste disposal opportunities within our sewage system. So, changes to municipal code. Anyway, and one final, one final thing that I did want to go ahead, before I go ahead and open up to questions. Public Works Director Zurov and myself, we will be going where we were invited to go, to Washington, DC, in an event called the Water Fly-In, Water Week Fly-In. And one of the highlights that Gary's been asked to go ahead and participate in is a congressional briefing on April 19th, where actually, we are going to, there's four different reuse facilities in the United States, two in California, one, I believe, in Virginia, and then ours. They're going to be highlighting different aspects of reuse that want to be highlighted and will. And that congressional briefing is to invitees only, and I believe congressional staff have been invited that have been identified by the Water Week Fly-In people. So, we'll be doing that, I think, April 15th, I believe, is when we're leaving. So, anyway. And with that, questions? Questions?
Any questions for Mr. Stack? Comments?
I have one.
Go ahead.
I was just going to thank you again for the tour that you and Gary and Scott from Apex gave me. It was pretty fascinating to see the process and really all the unique things that we're doing to clean water, especially without limited chemicals.
Right.
So, I would recommend anyone who hasn't been there to definitely go take that tour. It's really, really quite cool. And then, I think, I don't know that we understood that we were potentially doubling our revenue from reuse water, so I think that's really exciting.
Right.
So, keep up the good work.
And congratulations on the recognition out there in DC. So, good, good things are happening all over the place.
Very good. All right, thank you.
Thank you. We have nothing from planning and building and codes, Commissioners. Last item on the agenda is city administrator contract.
Mr. President, I would move that we go into executive session to discuss contract negotiations pursuant to the Sentry Code.
I have a motion to move into executive session.
It's noted on the agenda.
It's noted on the agenda.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We're in executive, regular commission meeting. And the last thing on the agenda is, Commissioner, well, I guess Commissioners, anything that we haven't discussed? Nothing from Commission? Public issues of city concern not on the agenda? No one present? Look for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned.